Okay, so.
All right, everyone, good evening. It is Tuesday, the twenty eighth at six o'clock, so officially call this board meeting to order. We'll start this evening with a roll call.
Oh, sorry, I'm so disheartened. Hello, my name is Aiden Halleck, I am the Senior Student Representative, I will also be speaking for the Junior Student Representative, Rihanna Dela Cruz.
Kate Crowder, Director, District Two.
Rob Simpson, District Three.
Big Boomer, District One.
Dr. Constance Pedrosa, Superintendent.
Florence Proctor, District Four.
Amy Rosen, District Five.
Welcome to all of our guests, joining both in person and online, appreciate you being here this evening. So we'll start as we always do with our land and labor acknowledgements, and I'm going to be reading those this evening. So our land acknowledgement, we in the Tuckwell School District acknowledge the land where we teach, collaborate, learn, and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Makoshu people, and past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Makoshu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duwamish and Makoshu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. And our labor acknowledgement, we further acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as United States. As a school district, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people that we serve. Now, I invite you if you would like to stand as we sit.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, to quickly review our Tuckwell School Board values and group agreements, I'll just kind of do the high level one there, but the additional text or rather, the meaning of these words is written there next to it. So we agreed to really abide and lean into these five components. The first being transparency, second courage, righteousness, curiosity, and respect, which in particular center humanity in our conversations and our decisions. So with that, if I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
A home favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we are now at our opportunity, our first opportunity to comment this evening. So if you are here in person, joining us, and would like to have a public comment, you can do so by raising, or by, excuse me, putting your name on the side of the sheet up there. If you're joining us online, you can raise that virtual hand or put your name in the chat. We have one public comment that was written and sent in, so I'm going to go ahead and read that. Is that for William? Yeah, did you like to read your?
Thank you, agree.
Perfect, lovely, so glad you're here, how's he right there? So glad you're there, William, thanks for.
This is concerning sales that very much do, and it's also effects. Selling candy to our fellow students has really made me grow as a person. It's really made me become confident, socialize, learn, and build community. It's become part of my identity. It's perfectly legal, but some people, some staff, do not agree that it should be done. And they're like destroying entrepreneurship and community students have created. When I first came to sixth grade, I did not know any of the students really. But once I started selling snacks, I was forced to talk with people who I otherwise never would have met. It is helping grow and evolve as a person, I've overcome, I love this, to talk to other people. And now I often socialize with other people, and it's empowered me and given me courage to build community and socialize with others. I've learned a lot from selling snacks, especially about running a business and entrepreneurship. It started in fifth grade in twenty twenty three, after Halloween, in November. I started consistently analyzing and recording all my sales and bringing on a notebook. And I want to use the money I earned from this to become an architectural engineer in my middle one architecture show. My entire business, few months community engagement, students care, respect me. In just two days, more than a hundred students signed my petition. Many students look forward to buying snacks from me, it improves their mood, and I'm well known as the greatest small town snack seller. And candy sales does not negatively impact my grades, as it only do it very much, nor does it stop any hours just learning time. I started selling candy, before I started selling candy, I would never have the confidence to be here today and speaking for you. I hope the board will approve the events for businesses of students, and of which the benefits outweigh any potential problems it can cause. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone joining us online? All right, okay, so that closes our first public comment opportunity. And now we move into our reports for the evening, so getting the student reps.
Okay, I haven't been here for a while, so we're going to be here for a little bit. Okay, first off, I just want to shout out, what's your name? The student who just spoke? I, you know, I have never seen a student come here willingly and come and speak before us with such confidence and with such compassionate, you know, passion in what they are talking about, and I just wanted to say, I think you're going to be a very great leader, you know, when you get into further down your educational path, and we need more students like you, you know, coming from someone that's been in student leadership pretty much ever since I was in sixth grade, and so, great job to you. I'm going to start with Rihanna's statement. Since the last board meeting, I led a SSAB meeting with Aiden, where we introduced SSAB, the Superintendent Student Advisory Board, and started off with advertising reflections, and even did a top five goal for our next meeting, which we learned from Dr. Pedrosa. I also went to my first ever Bill Gates Roundtable Meeting, where I was separated from the rest of Tuckwell School District, but I was able to meet a lot of new people and give them my thoughts on the students' lives after high school and what affects it. I also joined the girls' swim team, and although our season is ending, I had a great time. Since the last time I was here at an official board meeting, I have become the busiest person ever. I, we just got through homecoming week at Foster, and it was a lot of fun. The new class of twenty twenty nine, our freshmen are so extremely motivated and, you know, they're very, very involved, more so than I think any other freshman class I have ever seen. They were able to put together a full, you know, were able to complete every single homecoming event, which included a lip sync, hallway decorating, banner, and a bunch of other games, and they just knocked it out of park. I'm pretty, I think they got third or second place overall, which is one of the highest I've ever seen a freshman class achieve during Hokey Week. The seniors did not do very well. And the musical is going extremely well. I'd say we probably sound better than Adams did only a couple of weeks before we opened, and it's only October, and we don't go on until January. So go see Hattie's Town in January, January twenty something, I wish I had numbers in front of me, that's why I should bring a computer. And then I also went to the SSAB meeting, collated with Rihanna, we had a lot of student leaders there that really, you know, were passionate, passionate about, you know, voicing for themselves and getting others involved into, you know, voicing their opinions and shaping Tuckwell School District. I think the SSAB this year is looking very good and promising, I'm excited for the rest of the year. And then with the Bill Gates Roundtable, we heard from, last year we heard from a bunch of students, you know, that were entering college, and now we heard from a bunch of parents of those same students that were entering college and their perspective, you know, and how it kind of mirrored the students. And there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the barriers to college, and, you know, are those barriers really there? They are. And, you know, how that disproportionately affects minority communities and, you know, other communities that are of the, you know, that have less attainability for those higher fields and higher educational opportunities. And now I'm here, and I'm ready for this board meeting, and that's my report.
I'm curious to know where some of those, some of kind of take tough maybe two or three barriers that y'all like to fight?
Uh, finance. Finance, knowledge, like, just actually knowing about the college application process, about financial aid, about how long college actually is, you know, a lot, a lot of people think, you know, oh, it's four years, it's easy, it's, you know, it's like high school, I'm just there and there, and it's one straight path, and, you know, hey, for a lot of people, college can be a lot longer. And parents don't know that, parents don't know, you know, where to get their child, you know, resources, it's both, and it's also a lack of communication from higher education to these people. So it's both an issue in terms of information that is out there, and then lack of information that is being spread. And then finance, of course, it's the number one cited issue, you know, out, it's not even close.
I'm curious where the Tuckwell Promise kind of came into that conversation as a, as a opportunity to support that financial barrier.
I personally know. Pretty much all of my senior friends that are currently in the Tuckwell Promise would not have gone to college if they did not have that to them. Their, their families can't afford it, they can't afford it, and they gave them the opportunity to exceed, and it's, it's amazing.
So yeah, so I guess in the May, May, because it's kind of like what was the conversation around? Yeah, around that particular barrier, knowing that, like, particularly as a district, right, that they're trying to make some big moves as a city, district, city partnership, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we didn't talk about it in this session, but we did talk, we did introduce it last June. And I will just say, the Education Roundtable Group, they were really interested in Tuckwell's data. People don't know this, but we have some of the highest graduation rates. We're above the state of Washington for graduation rates, for your graduation rates, Foster High School, we're getting at Foster High School. So they're curious what we're doing, right, so they're curious, and some of the data we provided them, they, one of the people is like, she, she works for the Gates, where, where's that data, I want that data, so I think they are interested in learning more, and there is a small King Tami Promise Collaborative, where they want to bring all the Promise groups together to kind of figure out, how do we think about expansion and supporting other communities? Because I know now board members, I know some board members in other districts have said, I want to start that, so we just got to figure out, we're starting, so it's year one. It, so, but I think the Gates Foundation is interested in that topic.
Maybe misunderstood, we thought that conversation happened at the Superhead Advisory Committee Group.
Oh.
No, no, this was, this was the Gates, yeah, so, no, I should be more clear.
That's okay. All right, so that's for. Yeah, it might be a little long too, hopefully I can get through, so anyway, good evening, everyone, happy October, and to those who celebrate Happy Harvest, Halloween, and Dia de los Muertos, big week, please just have fun and stay safe, right, that's what I ask, and, and then hopefully all of you can all gather in your communities. First, I want to honor Marianne Abdo, who was selected as Washington State Classified Employee of the Year. The MKB Quality Specialists are an amazing duo, as a reminder to everyone, Julie Hurt was our Regional Classified Employee of the Year last year for the Puget Sound BSD, and so they provide exemplary service to our families who need it the most. And we are so proud that they choose to serve our community in Tuckwell School District, an amazing duo, we're so thankful for them, so. And they actually right now are trying to figure out how to support our families that will be impacted in the coming months as well with us, so they just are still at it all the time. October, I just want to do a little shout out, it's National Principal Month, and I want to thank our principals personally, so this is from me, to our proud principal of Foster High School, Ms. Latania Parker. I want to honor the way you show up in a calm and focused way for our scholars and staff every day. I also want to provide an additional thanks to Ms. Rokanaki and Mr. Loak, who support and show up for our scholars, and make sure that they're also supporting Principal Parker and the staff in their vision for excellence in their schools. To our newest principal, and show Walter, Ms. Sue Reader. You came to show Walter with energy, focus, and determination, we still feel it. And you are everywhere, and it shows in how you provide service. A shout out to Ms. Perez, who is focused on safety services and supportive of our families and scholars. To the determined principal of Thorndike Elementary, Mr. Michael Coyle. You have a focus on supporting your school and have found resources and services in innovative ways. I know your community is so appreciative of you. And to our cheerful and service-oriented principal, Dr. Tanisha Fromsted from Cascade View. You go out of your way to show up, advocate, and provide for your school, and make it a focus in how you interact with all, and I appreciate your leadership. And to our thoughtful principal, Haminer of Tuckwell Elementary, your calm and steady presence is appreciated by staff and scholars. You are focused on creating a welcoming environment, and it shows every day. So each of our principals have a bounty full of gifts, and we thank you for all you do. And then I'm going to add some district updates for folks at this time. Right now, there's a Somali parade happening at Foster High School, so I want to thank our family is on, Sophia Mohammed, for her coordination of this event, and now we're planning another one for our Latino families. And thank you to the families and scholars who have shown up at our community events, there's been so many to keep track of, that you keep showing up at all our events, so your support of our district is amazing. The Foster High School Library is still closed, I mean, the counseling area, the library is closed, and we're working on some of those pieces and the counseling area as well, so we have some, I know we have a timeline, and it's coming close, so it'll be opening soon, and as soon as that's opening, we'll be sharing with staff and community, but thank you everyone and staff and everyone for your patience, and the scholars for your patience during this process, but there's an end in sight, yay. We had to make sure, just to share, that we just had to make sure, you know, all of these things are, these environmental issues, there, we wanted to make sure there was ultimate safety for our, our community there. Last week was National Best Safety Week, and I want to thank the entire Transportation Department, man, I've never seen safety checks like this team, they are, they, that's no joke here. So just saying, they keep our scholars safe, and, and they mean it. And then I want to thank the Washington State Board of Education for your shout outs on all of the social media platforms, because they were here, we hosted, Tuckwell School District hosted them, and they just high praised, they got to visit Foster High School, it was just amazing, they just have said nothing but amazing things on social media, and are very proud, I'm very proud of the work we're all doing, so. And it was nice to have that recognized by the Washington State Board of Ed. And then just a reminder for our families, please review the district and school calendars for November. We have conferences scheduled, November fifth through seventh, which means early release days for students. Additionally, there's no school on Tuesday, November eleventh, and then Thanksgiving after that, so it's a interesting time, because it's a Tuesday, it's a Wednesday, it's all different times, and so please pay attention to our November calendar, because it's a little different this month, so, and that's all I have, which is a lot of it.
These are my questions. All right, mentioning with our Board of Director reports.
That's pretty low key, I couldn't imagine, well, it's huge events where we had tours and people from the state board and all that, but I couldn't be more proud of our superintendent and our students on, on the board participation, and really what I consider really significant events that put the spotlight on Tuckwell School District and the excellent sets coming forward over and over again. I, I want to get to a point someday where people aren't surprised. And when I first started here, I shared the kind of school district that I would see happen as the one where everybody looks and they're envious and want to do things that we're doing. And we're, we're not like getting there, we're arriving, which is really in so many dimensions. But on the capital side of things, I attended football games, I love the sports successes going on, I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder about the cheerleaders, but I, I really am impressed what, what goes on there and what kind of sport is coming through for them. It's just the innovation of what's going on with our school board members and the school district itself, finding a way to make things happen in probably the most difficult times we've had in a long time, probably since twenty twenty eight. I do want to say that I'm pretty close friends with Representative David Happey, and I was just the other night encouraging him to please make the date on November fourth. It's a really busy night for lots of people, board officials, but the time that we're having that meeting is early enough in the day, that I'm hoping he'll talk, Mr. Burkus to the making it here, and boy, it'll be some, and I'll make some calls to see if we can get Senator Casa Gallo here. I think it's important that they, I literally said, we've seen pictures of them with the administrative chair of the city, what do you think the community will think if they, all three are here in front of the board and talking with our superintendent all at once? So hopefully they'll dig in on that number. And then lastly, I just, behind the scenes, I keep annoying anybody I can from the city, anybody I can from the council, to just focus on Cascade View's traffic issues, because they're dangerous. And we, we started the, the end of, well, it started, we ended last year with parents from Cascade View who live three doors away withdrawing their children and homeschooling because a mother and her daughter fell as though they were in harm's way with the way traffic occurs there. The city started well with motorcycles, not motorcycles, police officers there at the beginning of the school year, but that seems to have faded, and was, it's starting to slip back into the sort of angsty things that parents do with their cars when they come in there. All we have to do is look at Thorndike and see the way the curbs are painted and traffic is controlled there in ways that, they have franticness too, but there's a lot more rituals in place going on, and I just feel like the city council and the mayor need to focus and implement a lot of things, because I see crosswalks and all kinds of things in place at the other schools, Tuckwell is another one, they have tight spaces, but it's pretty, pretty well controlled. I fear for our children up at Cascade View, and many of them are walking over from the United Methodist Church, and so we got our walk and roll to school paths in place, but once they get to that cul-de-sac, they have to make it about four hundred yards more, and it's just flat out dangerous. So that's what I've been doing, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, I know others have been speaking to the mayor and different people, I just think we keep planning. They have a plan, but some of those things in the plan are just moving signs around, I would like to see a lot more protecting for our students. Thanks.
Okay, so first off, I went and did the Yellow Line fundraiser, and they could not stop talking about Foster High School and talking about the Booster Burgers and the small community and the small town that it's here, and, and the kids and the field, and so I was really impressed with Gabe Terris and what he's doing down there on the field, and just people from the outside saying what a wonderful job that they're doing here, so. Just wanted to say, great job there. Tuckwell Elementary had its, what was it, Spook Night Dance and everything else, and my granddaughter just, and like, it was her favorite thing ever. So she had to go around and do dance with her dad and parents and stuff, and they were just talking about how amazing it was. So I thought that was just fantastic, so great job Tuckwell. As far as the College and Career Center, it's funny that we bring this up, because it's a good time. I did talk to some representatives from Highland Community College. They say that Urban League has a couple desks in the Career and College Center now, and that if we could give them a space, they would staff somebody to help parents and families fill out the applications and get everything done, but we have to just talk to them about how we can get them in there, if we can make room for them, they feel like they would be able to, to staff that now, but.
I haven't heard that, but thank you.
Tuckwell, yeah, for the Tuckwell Promise, since they're kind of our direct school with it, so that would be, it would work both ways for them to, to get students involved and excited about it, educate them, and then we can keep moving forward.
Did you give me the contact?
I will.
That would be great, thank you. Exciting.
That's it.
That's awesome, thank you. I have nothing of note to report, so.
Full busy schedule. But I, I think, a couple meetings at Foster with the school partner, it's worked out, but I got to hang out at home, covered.
Yes.
Okay, and had a great time, and in collaboration with, yeah, King Kelly, Representative Quinn, some of the boarder, was there, we were able to secure that five thousand award, five thousand dollar award for the Foster Cheerleaders. So just continuing to do, do, do some more here at the school, so again, meeting with, I think we had two meetings with Foster, and looking forward to connecting with a new principal, show Walter, and how we can help, and navigating through it, so yeah, again, that, like, is we, we secured that, that, that award, and it, I think last June they said, we got it, but what was it, like, two weeks ago, so that's a long time. Can we get the interest on that? So we're looking forward to continuing work with those.
So, as I mentioned in one of the previous board meetings, I'm working on an op ed piece for the Seattle Times about the education funding system. What is interesting is that the Seattle Times, just I think a week ago, actually published another op ed from a parent up in Seattle who works for the Reiki Foundation, which is one of the local film topic foundations, that's on exactly the same topic. Different, different approach to it, but the bottom line was, you know, fix the funding formula, students bear needs, get more money. And so I think what I'm going to do with the one that I have prepared is maybe hold it for a couple of weeks, just to have a little space, because I don't want Seattle Times to say, well, we just published none of that, but, but I'm encouraged that there's actually somebody else actually publishing exactly the same, the same topic, so that was, that was really encouraging. It's a really good editorial, I turned, I encourage people to read it, it's in the Friday, October seventeenth, Seattle Times. So. Last weekend, I was at the School Directors Association Legislative Committee, where we were reviewing, if you could bring up my attachment on that one, would be great. Yeah, sort of good, or get it out, yeah. So the, the School Directors Association went through our prioritization process in terms of ranking all the, we have over a hundred and twenty different legislative positions, and what I have here is, these are the top ten ones that, that we voted for, and the good news is that the ranking, you know, eight, eight of our ten top tens ended up in the top ten of the whole organization as a whole, so that's really good. And what the good news about, or any of the news about it is that, you know, a lot of these are focused on equity, equity in school funding, and, and some of the other ones that don't have the word equity in them are still, we just go down into them, they have equity in them, so. So there's, there's good alignment, I think the School Directors Association of all the organizations that I see has the best equity positions of anybody, and so they're gonna, they're in the process of coming out with their kind of legislative priorities for the year and for this next session, and there's going to be a good equity focus of involved in helping them write that, so we're going to have a good, good equity focus coming out of that, which was, which was really good. See, I was over at the Cascade View PTA had a meeting, and one of the things there that probably all, I mean, actually it's called PTO, not PTA. And what they're looking for, like a lot of, I think, our PTOs is funding for field trips for students, and the Cascade View one, last couple of years, has made a lot of money off of hardwood stands, and apparently that, for one reason or another, can't continue this year. I think most of it ran out of that, so they're looking for other ways to get funding for their field trips, and, and I suggested, you know, going to the Tuckwell Children's Foundation, which we've done in the past, and so they go, they're going to go take a look at that, so hopefully we can keep, keep the um, gonna go take a look at that. So hopefully we can keep, keep the um uh, field trips going. Those are one of the things that's the, I think most schools is kind of tough to find out of our um school district budget, but that's one that community input can get into. So I was also at the Washington State PTA Association, um which is the, uh, they have a legislative committee over in at SeaTac Airport and uh, was able to, they were asking, they wanted me to be on a panel and talk about how parents could interface with school boards, but one of the questions was, what are you passionate about? So I was speaking in the whole discussion of funding and everybody in funding. And so actually showed some of my slides uh, from that and the gaps that we have and why more funding is needed in the high poverty areas. And so um, that uh, was well received. Um, the last thing I just wanted to kind of, um, a, a book I've been reading about is called Ten to Twenty Five, Besides Motivating Young People. And I was thinking, as we're in the um, the season of um, Halloween and lots of candy floating around um, that um, some, a lot of candy is, is, it's for good reasons, but if you take another look at it, the the health impacts of that, of high sugar diets and high processed foods and so forth um, health for our students is, is not great, particularly since in this country we have a lot of, you know, a lot of obesity problems. Uh, diabetes, um, type two diabetes problems, um, all that kind of stuff. And you know, it's, this book kind of approaches, I mean, one approach to that, I mean, we're an education institution, so kind of the obvious way to look at it as well is provide some education for our students about these um uh, about healthy eating and all that kind of stuff, which is good. We should do that. Um, in the past, the, the premise of this book is that we've been doing it kind of the wrong way. If we kind of start lecturing to students about, you know, you should do this because it's healthy and so forth. Um, most people in this kind of ten to twenty five range, um you know, what, you have to think about kind of what's motivational for them. And this is a major, students are developing independence and a little bit of rebelliousness. And so we kind of feed into that. And we start telling the story about what's behind all these, all these snack foods and candies that are coming out. I mean, they're typically produced by some of the large food, food and beverage companies that are, you know, I was looking at the largest candy um, company in this, in this country is Hershey's and their, you know, their C D, CEO is making seventeen million dollars a year and their, their profits are like three million dollars a year. And they're making all this money off you know, providing not great, uh, healthy nutritious stuff for our students. And so the premise of this book, if we, if we kind of told that story and appealed to the students' kind of um uh, desire to be independent and a little bit rebellious, they might make some better choices in terms of healthy. I mean, I'm not trying to put a squash on the fun of Halloween, cuz there's lots of good things that happen. But at the same time, I think, um just causing us to think a little bit, I mean, the PTA at Cascade View is talking about selling candy bars and so forth and you know, all good causes, but you know, maybe there's some better ways to do it. So I just show that out as a, as a thought promotion thing. So that's it. Thanks.
All right. So if I could get a motion to approve our content agenda?
So moved.
Call in favor? All right, uh, next is our board business and discussion. We have four items on the agenda versus just kind of looking at that board business document to see if there's anything that's um, kind of emerging or um, we need to do a board check-in around. Um, so just take a second, you know, so if you have any questions about something.
So a couple things. One is, um, I think we, we still haven't completed our obligation around superintendent evaluation. Need to get that finished up, so we can do that, get that done. And then the other one is, we talked about, uh, a court and whatever about the cannabis shops and whether people wanted to send in, we sent a letter to the city on that one and we gave it to the superintendent to review and come back at some point. And so that, those are the only two I would add to the, to the list, make sure that we get, get them finished up.
Anything else?
Nope, I don't listen to the two.
All right, um, next is the levy discussion. So, um, if I remember correctly, um, we chatted a little bit about this at our um, work session earlier in the month. Um, Director Larson, and I believe Director Kula as well, uh, had a conversation, you, you were with the committee that we, yeah. Uh, I had a conversation with um, the previous uh, chairs of the levy committee and um, got some information, shared what we knew, um, about some of the money, uh, uh, the numbers, um, that we had seen, um uh, from our CFO. And uh, we, we needed to bring it back around today, um, just to kind of make an official action, which we've got later on. But kind of the consensus around that conversation was that, um, we determined it was not really within our best interests. Um, both from the committee chair perspective, um, and then from our perspective, we didn't, we wouldn't wanna do it without um, those, the, the buy-in from those folks who have been so, um, uh, consistent and supportive of those in the past. So um, that was kind of the really high level of the conversation. And welcome to go back, um, to either our work session, to listen to that recording or even our previous board meeting, um, where we really looked into some of those numbers to really understand a little bit about why. Um, anything else that anyone wanted to bring, um, or, or discuss before we get to this actually, I don't know?
Right. The only thing I just wanted to emphasize, when, when we look at, you know, the, the amount of money, if we, if we did not do a vote, um, we would get about, over the three-year period, about three point nine million dollars. If we did this vote and it was, and it was successful, it would be about seven point four. So essentially by doing, uh, by not doing anything, we're still gonna get ninety percent of the additional money that the legislature would allow us to collect locally. So
And then going back, we wouldn't be able to actually get much more, but potentially put us in an interesting situation if our boroughs in the future.
Yeah, I think everybody's just in agreement that the boroughs, uh, our residents are exhausted and we are at the high end of what is tolerable unknown by statisticians, um, in the thirty four to thirty seven percent ranges on taxation with no end in sight at the moment. And so I think people are judging the psych, the psych, the psychology of the situation while here.
All right, um, next is a conversation, um, the first conversation that we've had about this, um, which is the real estate. Um, so, uh, a new, um, law issue was passed, um, in the most recent session um, that gave an opportunity for districts, um, uh, for, uh, in binding conditions um, to make decisions about, uh, real estate. Typically, um, please correct me if I'm saying anything inaccurate, cuz I don't know the full scope of it. But typically, um, it is not something that the district can do to just sell land. Um, uh, but knowing the state of the financial, uh, conditions of many districts in the state, um, the legislature, we should instantly pass, um, uh, a, a law allowing that to happen. So um, we wanted to, um, in some of our conversations with the pool, um, we, this kind of came up as something worth just talking about. Um, so this is kind of our first opportunity to really, um, just have some dialogue about, uh, you know, where, what uh, if this is something that we might want to put on the table, um, as an option. Um, uh, there was something that was shared with everyone, uh, to kind of help guide our discussion. Uh, there's a, a market analysis that was done. So you all share that in your email. Um, so yeah, just kind of wanted to, to start this conversation. Um, we can clarify two points.
Uh, one is that, um, the recent legislative action that was passed actually allowed that we could use, any sale of property could be used and supported in our general fund during the time of binding conditions. We can sell property, but we can't, if, if we're out of binding conditions, we still can, but we cannot use it for general funds. We would have to use it, but we could use it for capital projects. So you can still sell property regardless, but it just how you, where you place the money uh, for finding certain ways, it, it matters. The other thing is we are still beholden, that was a question that was asked regarding our CW twenty eight K three, three, five, one, two, zero. Uh, where there's some, uh, procedures that we have to follow, um, that are aligned to the law. Um, and so I sent that to the board just to make sure that we were all aware of what those procedures were. Um, and I'm happy to share that also with, um, um, I'll send to the student directors as well.
So the other dynamic thing in here is we may or may not get out of binding conditions.
Yeah.
In which case this wouldn't, this law, this new law wouldn't apply. I mean, there's timing issues here. So I just, we just need to be aware of that. That's all.
So we could make it, we could go on a pathway today and then in two months get out of binding conditions.
Right. Or we might wanna move a little bit further. So that's another possibility of question. Uh, when you said we could go with the general fund, but otherwise we could do it for capital projects, uh, if we were to sell during binding conditions, can we also use it for capital projects?
I think we can use it in any way. Yeah, but I think, but it's more flexibility because binding conditions is regarding our general fund, right? Our balance in our general fund. Um, so that's the only caveat.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Didn't wanna talk more on the subject, or?
Yeah.
Pause, I thought there was more.
No, no, that's the context.
It's no secret that I'm in support of doing collaborations with, um, Tuckaway, metropolitan pool district. Um, I think the park can, the park should be smarter. We've had conversations about programs, what were offered, whether we took advantage of them or not. I'm glad to see that we reached a point where we made agreements on parking. Um, that's, the next logical step is this conversation. And uh, I wanna make sure, is everybody aware that they're under time pressures as well, besides our time pressures with binding conditions and other forms of sale? Do we feel like the whole board is aware of how, where the NPTP is positioned?
Um, I, I think, well, um, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. I'm also, like, don't necessarily see the while they're of course connected, cuz the pool's on that land that we're talking about, right? Um, I don't see it as a, either we sell them the land or we don't collaborate, right? I see it as
Oh, no, no, no.
Even if we keep the land, the, the, the desires that we still maintain the pool and keep, you're right, so.
It's not the real, my question is, in this conversation that we're having with the pool, I think we need to stay mindful of that, that they've got the line, it's just like, we've got some limitations and things that we'd have to move to handle. And all of them seem to be pressing. And I just, I'm not sure, I've heard it from, uh, pool commissioners. I just haven't heard it through any of our communications. And I just wanna make sure everybody on the pool is aware that that pressure on their end exists.
I guess that's it. I'm not aware.
Okay.
What are some of those time constraints?
I think, I, I don't know what we're allowed to do during this meeting, but it seems like we could actually ask them to just, or comment quickly on that, so everybody gets the same information at once.
Okay. That's all. Information office.
Yeah, so you want me to sit?
Sure.
Sorry, it's off and out, but at the same time, I'd just like us all to be knowledgeable at the same time.
No, thank you, Commissioner. Director Kell Carter. Um, Vanessa Zaptel, I'm a Tuckaway local metropolitan park district board president. Uh, yes, so there are some time constraints. We got a King County grant for five million dollars. Most or every public pool ever in Washington State, so it's a huge deal. And so, um, we need to move deliberately forward. There are time constraints with our grant. It's a three-year spend out. We do have some time. We're just starting the process of negotiating with King County. So uh, it's twenty five percent match two, so that means twenty million we have to spend out. So we have to make some decisions as to where our future lies, what property, before we can get into anything like design. So there is a timeframe associated with this that's important for us as the district.
Great.
Does that provide enough context?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I would say on the, on the, the parking, we have an MOU for the short-term parking. I don't think we saw the long-term parking issue. That's still in play. And I assume that the pool will probably you know, need to take that into consideration in terms of their, where they wanna locate a pool, whether or not the party is developed or not.
Right. So we are in collaborative spirit at this point.
Well, I don't know, for the short term, yeah. I don't know. Is it good for the long term? I don't know.
Yeah.
So yeah, so I'm just gonna kind of skip across some things here. I think, you know, think about the selling of land, and it just kind of came up when we were talking about um, uh, leases as well of the, of the properties that we have. It's just, you know, surely like, how do we anticipate what is gonna happen in the future of our district? Um, and then, you know, making decisions about land that you know, should we grow, what that then could look like? Um, so, you know, I, I think I'm, I'm kind of curious to, to, to think through um, as much as we can hypothesize without getting too much of the meat about that, like, you know, five years, ten years down the road, um, what would it look like if we don't have this land? Um, and, uh, what would the conditions of our district look like where we would then not have enough space for our students? Um, what would the benefits of selling this land be, obviously besides the support of our financial district and or the financial standing of our district, um, as well as allowing, you know, getting the, the pool able to move. I'm sorry, I'm just kind of, you know, thinking through, what are those kind of like unintended impacts down the road? Um, that, that could come up. And I know I'm asking this to like, thinking what ifs and hypotheses, but um, I feel like that's what we have to do. Um, I think the other thing that has come up for me a little bit is, um, I think this is something we have to get community input on. Um, again, we are making, we've been making a big decision about public land, um, right, our land, um, uh, that, that really belongs to the community. Um, and so I would wanna make sure that we were being good students of that, um, and, and somehow we're getting some deep community input um, around this issue. Just some of my initial thoughts.
I also wanna weigh in that we've had a history since nineteen seventy since having the pool here. We are lucky and grateful to get a pool put into our, our area under our board's trust. Um, it's lasted in, in partnership with our students. So we only started leasing to them once they formed a, um, metropolitan school district. So for many, many years, I think it was a one dollar deal, and there was no major pressure. Uh, we weren't saying that we were gonna have so many students and build up over X number of decades where we would remove that land. Uh, while we're also thinking about it, we should start thinking about, um, some of the buildings we have and some of the spaces we have, whether we can go vertically as well as expand out, because a lot of this also has to do with uh, the environment around the campus and what we think our imprint on nature should be as a school district.
Yeah, I think in terms of, you know, in particular Foster High School, if it needs to be expanded, um if, if we sell this property, you know, you've eliminated some possibilities for expanding horizontally in that direction. So then you have to go up, which, you know, I mean, we know construction going up is more expensive than going out in general, uh, but, you know, I, we're not in a position, certainly in any short term of having to expand Foster High School, um, you know. If we're talking, I mean, we're talking thirty years in this particular situation, then then, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of a consideration. Versus, or the other option, I guess, is opening another school somewhere else and some other other property, which which then gets into our other item, there's lots of, that's just a foster memorial park. And so, um yeah, I, I mean, I think there's no doubt if, if, if the school, if we sell some properties, it closes up some options. Now, whether those options are, you know, bad enough to, you know, offset, I mean, this is a prospect of good analysis. And so, um, you know, I think it's certainly, from my perspective, certainly desirable to have a pool in the area. So that's a plus, but whether it's, you know, it does limit some options. I guess the other thing is, well, yeah, the other option that, that we haven't really talked about is potentially expanding the school district property, for example, um, out into where the, you know, the church is potentially. Um, that's another option for, you know, if we needed to expand. So there's, there are some other options that you could go vertically in that way. Um, so it's hard to speculate on exactly when that would happen.
Um, so I have a question that I really do not want it to be, don't really answer my question, just a question. Um, so are we thinking, are we having this conversation because we're thinking about the financial benefit to the district? Or, um, and or, or somewhere in the middle, um, are we, are we having this conversation because um, uh, we want to make space for the pool to expand on that land? Or is it both? Is it all of it? Um, but I think knowing the root of what, what it is, we're thinking Um, but I think knowing the root of what, what it is we're thinking about, why we're interested in selling our real estate, I think it's important to then have the conversation.
Right, right. I, I started out, uh, becoming very active in the community. When the city council decided they were going to, for five hundred thousand dollars. Tear the thing down and fill in the hole, and then that was it, they were going to get out, because they couldn't afford to run it. And that's why we have a metropolitan pool district, because people understood that we live by a, a river, by the Puget Sound. By the lake, when I speak to people about my career as starting out in swim teams. About learning to swim, uh, as young as four, that I consider water my friend, I don't worry about what's underneath, there's some sharks. Around here are going to come get you, although there are people who are fearful of water. Um, you can drown in, I think it, they said, something on, on the order of two cups of water. And children do often, um, and the mortality rates that we have around drownings are much higher than I think most people would, would, would expect. And the best line of defense is to educate people to swim. And the pool has educated people up to adulthood for that. So when I look at this, I'm not actually thinking about financially, but the other guys, but re-mining, you know, the, the numbers, and the numbers shake out to be. In a reasonable amount, but what is priceless are the lives that we're saving by having the pool there, and what's priceless is having a pool in this community. Which has very few things to claim as an asset.
Okay, I, I'm a little confused, and I, I'm, I'm asking, I'm just going to ask this question so that I can better understand. Is the pool not going to stay here if they don't buy the property?
No, that's why, that's why I'm a little confused as well, that's kind of why I asked the question, it's like, why are we talking about selling the land, right? Because.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a shaking of the head. Um, so I guess, could you speak to that, because that would help clarify what we're talking, because I think you have a little more information than I have.
A whole lot more.
I'm seeing a shaking of the head.
Yeah, so, um, I can speak to the fact that owning the property is of paramount importance to us. It frees us up for LOCAL funding that we don't get opportunity to.
Can you say what that is?
C, L O C A L funding, it's, it's a, um, a loan program through the state. Uh, that you really need to own the property to be able to be eligible for.
Okay.
It's, um, gives us certainty, financial certainty. When we start talking bond payments, et cetera, that we have control over our fiscal responsibility to our people in the future. To know that our costs aren't going to escalate at a rate that we can't afford. So we're very, we're doing a fiscal pro forma right now, going for twenty years, um, to see what it is we can afford for our taxpayers. And we're being very careful about all that, but having, um, fiscal stability and knowing our costs. Are, are a very important part of that, does that make sense?
It, it, it does, um, my thinking is, is, um, if we're leasing you the property and we're having a long-term lease. Is that not the type of, or is that because it's leasing, you couldn't get these fundings because it's leased? Even though we would give you, you know, you'd be able to tell what the, what the rent was going to be, is that true?
Right, the LOCAL funding becomes, it's, it's designed for, um, entities to own the land. There are some rare examples where it is leased land, but it ends up being a twenty or thirty, a very long. Um, addendum that the school district has to agree to all these different pieces because of the way that lease is actually technically. You have to give a, um, guarantee, so you become a leaseholder, it's, it's a complicated process, so. The end of the day, we just need to own the property, be able to make ourselves eligible for that kind of funding.
Okay, and then what timeline does the pool see itself in needing to know if the property will be available to sell? Or if, if the community, considering if you want community input, one other input that are in there, what are, what's the timeline?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, I know my board has indicated end of year is what, that's the. Yes, so that's something we shared at the, uh, school district for a period of time since the spring. So, um, that's, so that because we're, we're in a position where we can't really move forward with. Um, owner's rep, project manager, design, until we know where it is that we can be located.
So.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
You're on the train of thought. Please.
Okay. I, I, I guess, well, and, and again, I, I guess I'm asking for some apologies, this is, this is a little bit news to me, right? And so I think this is information that, um. A-again, I feel a little bit impressed with this timeline, um, with factors that we didn't fully know about. And so I guess a curiosity I have is like, if this hadn't happened in the legislature, let you, providing this opportunity for us to actually sell the property in this way. What would the pool have done?
That's a great question, um, we're not there right now, so if back in, when this happened in May. Was when we were starting to form our foundations of what we were going to do, so when that came up. In fact, Dr. Pedro said, had, had had very candid conversations during our quarterly lease, and we had those conversations about it, so. Uh, we were informed about it, we knew about it, so we've been working on. Those, forming those assumptions, or I shouldn't say assumptions, but forming that, that piece of a plan since the spring, so.
When did your vote connect, sorry, can I ask you a question? Well, I know that you guys took a vote to approve that process, when did that happen? I just want to clarify.
To approve the process.
The process for, the, where your board agreed to, to engage in, that happened just this, this August or fall, right? When did your, your board do it formally?
I mean, technically, formally, we made a motion at our, just last week.
Yep.
To actually formally provide an offer.
Okay.
So we did that, uh, we engaged in it as far as working on it on a committee level. Um, the board was informed about it, and, um, we've been working on that since the spring.
Okay, thank you, I have some questions, um, and I just. Want to wrap my mind around it, because I heard right there, Hoover's. Um. Inquiry that all of a sudden we have this pressure. My understanding is that we were finalizing the new lease. I was here, the lawyers, now we're talking about selling, and so I heard their question. Um, why, and I heard your answer, forget the acronym, but it started with L. So you didn't have an opportunity to secure some funding, but that grant requires you to own the land.
Not the grant, the, um, the, the mechanism of the loan from the state.
The mechanism, got, now, my understanding is historically, when. The, uh, pool agency went into a lease, this, you know, we wanted theirs. I saw the lease and sweet deal for the rent, so my question is. If we're grandfathering this sweet deal for rent, and we just want it there. Where does the revenue come from to buy the land? And if you've had that money, how can we have renegotiated the lease in a way that everybody manifests? In, in my mind, as a simple, uh, just liquidate your assets, particularly lands to be your last resort. So I, I've yet to see how that's advantageous to us, even if the dollar amount. Is large enough to get us out of this, but this, this is just, this is just the edge of the globe. But once you lose land, it's, so I, I, there's levels of nuances that I'm not understanding the sense of urgency. For, um, or I should say, I understand in your area, I just don't see why it's urgent on our end. And how it came in, at, at the tail end of a lease agreement, we were at the, at the finalizing point. Um, and God bless you, if, if you all have the resources to buy. I get it, but I'm, I'm kind of thrown off, because I was looking at these series of decade leases that. Were just written just so that we can keep working together, they weren't written at market value, they weren't written at. At square footage rate that is equitable to the community, and so, in my mind. That's like somebody written on your property saying, I want to buy it so I can get some money from some other pool, but I've given them a. Section eight deal for the last twenty years. Yeah, that does, so I may be missing something, but if I simplify some of the nuances. On those papers in my folder, uh, so help me understand it, please.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of in the assumption that everyone understands that we own the building. That it's just the land, the land.
I do understand that, but the land, the building.
Yes.
Sit along the land, alright, so we're clear.
Yes, so I, to have the certainty going forward of, um, being able to. Understand. What we can afford as a pool district, once again, we are committed to serving the same families and, and community that you are. And most of our, like eighty percent of our, our staff are foster high school students, and so. We do that in a way that we are very careful fiscally with our money. So part of that is making sure that we have security in our land.
That part's clear, but I have some questions on some of the points you raised about swimming. Some of my people work with Swim USA and wanted to do a series of workshops here at Foster, they had to go to the. Federal Way one and the Evergreen Pool, because they said that you all's relationship with the swim club, you wouldn't allow you to do it. So I was, and I was like, so that's another question, but when, when I start hearing these discussions about. Educating those who are at risk of not learning swimming, and then some of the most vulnerable agencies who serve that. Weren't able to use our ability, and I was like, hey, I know the people up there, I can massage them, let's see if we can have a conversation. But that sidebar, but you all keep bringing it up, so I'm going to come back to that, but finish what you were saying, go ahead.
I'm not sure I can provide any additional information other than just the security of. Being able to make good fiscal decisions on, on a model. And that includes being able to know what our land costs are over the duration of our bond.
I appreciate that, much respect, I beg you for sharing and answering my questions.
Yeah, and thank you, and, and just so you know, I, I was not aware of this, oh, okay, so, so what you're kind of getting right now is just a. A, a reflex at this point, that we're going to have to go back and, and, you know, talk about. So, because this, this part wasn't shared, and especially the end of the year date, you know what I mean, type of thing, for, for something this big, so. Um, please, please understand that also, you know, in our conversations.
Does that also mean that this conversation means that the least thing we were working on is off the table now, this is what we want, this is the priority?
I, you know, I think at this point, we're going to need to make a motion out of like, uh, we're going to need a discussion with this. Because it sounds like there's been some conversations that have been happening, side of that, we're not aware of. And so then we need to get that all cleared up on our end, and then we're going to, and find, we have to find time to do that quickly, if this is something. That they're going to want to do.
In the next ninety days, you said.
And to be clear again, I don't feel com- comfortable making that decision without community input as well. And, and again, I think I want to be clear that, and again, maybe, maybe we can't separate the two. Maybe we can't separate the question of, w- why are we talking about selling the land from the pool being there? And, and if that's, if we can't separate that, then tell me, am I, or am I, am I being naive and think that we can. Yeah, so, so my original question, right, that kind of prompted me, this is, why are we having a conversation about selling the land? Is it because, um, of the, the financial benefit that it would have to the district? Um, or is it because we have this opportunity and. The, the pool would be able to then make, make their decisions about expansion? Um, so if it's about the district, then great, let's have that conversation about the benefits of, to the district. Um, if it's about, simply about the pool and the timing all just kind of works out, because this was passed and the pool's doing expansion. Then that, I think, colors the conversation differently, not entirely, but differently. So I think I'm just curious to know, why are we having this conversation? Why are we, why are we interested in this?
I think we introduced the topic, these guys, it doesn't look so.
Sure, that's, that's what I'm asking the group, why, why?
Superintendent.
Yeah.
Rightfully, being transparent, came to us with more options we didn't know existed back in May, and this stuff started going off over the summer. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, make smart decisions, we were split in bulles. Uh, there are people who took furballs, there are people who lost their jobs, we're not out of the woods, I don't even care if these guys come back and say. Um, you're not buying the dishes anymore, it's this conversation, but as far as I'm concerned, we are far. From fat and happy financially.
And of course, but I also know if you sell the land, you put it in your general coffers. Eventually, that money will be spent, we won't have the land. Yeah, that. That doesn't solve.
No, I think we have to hear from our CFO for sure about, uh, about this part of it. My, my, my thing, going back to your original question, the duty of me sitting here is to our district.
Yes.
I am, I believe that I'm part of the Taquilla community, I live there, I love it, kids go to the Taquilla Pool, but sitting in this chair is the Taquilla District. So I need to have a discussion, my, when we originally were going to go here, I was going to, my thing was. I need to know before we sell the land, where's the money going to go, what would be its purpose? And then every time I, I feel like that we have a, a net flow of money, it's going to go up. And so then I have it, I have a whole nother issue with that, that has nothing to do with the pool.
Yeah.
If we're going to talk now that I'm selling it, you know, if that's, if that's the issue that we're going to have to go to. We have this timeline, then that's what I'm saying, I think there needs to be, I need more information to make. A decision, and we need community input to it as far as coming from, if it's going to be. If this is best for Taquilla's school district.
And I want to put the rest, I don't have a great amount of information more than anybody else on this board, or have not missed long conversations. I have ethical standards, and I'm not going to work against the good, uh, of the students and of the school district. My job as fiduciary here is equal with every one of you, so I don't want to have my reputation stained just as I'm listening. And watching their surveys and reading the documents they handed us and saying, wow, feels like there's some deadlines coming up. Because to expect a pool to wait, I don't know, five years, so we can get off the dime, decide to make a decision, they're going to make another decision. That, it doesn't matter, maybe they'll move, maybe it'll be a better thing, but we came up with, oh, we're in financial dire straits. We're kind of right in our ship, look, here's another option, yes, we should talk to our CFO, these are all really important decisions. But I tried to remind you, these guys are, I mean, they've been collaborating with us as King County since nineteen seventies. As the city of Taquilla in the early teens, uh, eleven to fifteen, and now as a pool district. And they've never said we're going to take our ball and go home, they've said, how can we engage more? So I would hope that we want to, whether we lease or, or sell, continue to build that relationship. Because it can be adverse to our children.
I agree, but I haven't sat here in a conversation with us unless I'm totally clueless here, and we talked about selling the property outright.
This is the first one.
I'm, I've sat, we've lawyered the leases, and we've gone through that part of it, so I have not sat here and did, so this is the first.
I, I don't think that's true, because, well, you might not have been in the meeting, there's a possibility, you missed a meeting, but. Constance, really, you first introduced it, because it was going through last legislation by April.
Okay, let me, I don't have the timeline in my head.
Okay.
Um, the legis, the legislative session was completed in March-ish, correct? April, then we introduced, we came to the board to discuss the possibility of starting a discussion. Exploring a discussion, that was in spring, and then, um. And then I think we've done some, we decided to do a pool, we decided to do a market analysis, that was decided. And they did their own market analysis, and they, then their surveying, and then, um, here we are. So that's, that's what we've done.
We have extended to you.
This is our first board conversation about the selling, I think one other thing that I just have to name, um. This is not us versus them, and I actually really don't appreciate that perspective, right? Or that, that lens that you brought into it just then, because it isn't, nobody, and I think. That's why I've tried to like, start every statement I have with, you know, it's not about the, it's. We're, we all want what's best for the larger community, right? Um, everybody has made very clear throughout this entire process that we want the pool to be there. We believe in the value of the pool, okay, so this isn't an us versus them, but we do have to have a valuable, uh, logical. Rational, uh, future-forward, district-oriented conversation about the, the selling of our property. Okay, so, uh, again, it's not about the pool, and I wish for a second that we could actually pretend that we weren't talking about land the pool was on. And say, do we want to sell some land? That's what I'm trying to get to, should we have that conversation about, do we just want to sell some land? Try and imagine the pool's not there for a second, or not, maybe we're talking about the Foster. So, yeah, sure, maybe we're talking about Foster and the Warner Park, and we don't have that on our agenda later, we're not, don't worry, don't worry. Um, uh, because if.
That's what I was gonna go like, I, I tried to do it, I heard yesterday.
So if we're, if we're not just talking about selling land, then I think that just makes it a much more complex conversation. Um, so yeah, so that was kind of the question, my original question, why are we talking about selling land?
So I wanted to just make, get back to your original few questions. First of all, is is this, the school district will be selling this to help um solve our financial problem? And I think the answer to that is no, because it's one-time money.
Yes.
The school district's issue is long-term, and you know, to, I, you know, get some one-time money, you know, and hire somebody for a year, that's, that's not gonna solve our, that was the benefit for us too. So I think it's not really a financial issue. Um, second, you know, you're talking about um community input. I suspect, and we've heard some community input already, the community input is gonna be, we want a pool. And that's, that's, you know, if you start getting down into all these financial details, I suspect vast majority of community does not want to go there, does not want to go there. That's, that's, you know, that's kind of our job to figure out. And we need, I agree with you, we need to protect, you know, the, as a school district board, we need to make sure that the school district is is well-served and our students are well-served in that. But anyway, that's my perspective on those two issues. Um, yeah.
So um, let me ask this, what do we feel like we would need information-wise um to to go to the next step in this conversation, right? Because obviously, I think there's some stuff that we need, um whether that's from our CFO, um.
So it was in a, uh, email I'll be sharing that we've suggested with Chief Welling and I that we propose an executive session with our district lawyer who's helping us with this topic so we can review the um, the, the, the um our market, because we did a market analysis, right? Um, we have to review that, we have to review the author, and we have to review the RCWs. Um, all of those pieces, and then I think the board can make a decision in that space and then decide how to move forward. So we, we, we're proposing an executive um meeting.
Sounds great to me.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll see you this week.
And hard and fun. Appreciate you sitting in and getting a little deep water. What you're having yourself on, I appreciate you, much, much respect.
Yeah.
All right, um, if there's nothing else on that, we will add an executive question to one of our upcoming meetings. Um, as much as we can, honoring the timeline that we know now that you have, yes. Um, uh, okay, so next is uh the board handbook. Handbook is just our uh final opportunity to uh add some input. I know at the end of our last time looking at this, uh, we asked that the values get added, uh which those did, um and then a few other uh minor updates, but this is um up for action this evening. Um, it's gonna be a really exciting uh thing to finally have in place.
So, um, so the new section that was added was around this budget and so forth. So there's a couple of small changes I'd like to put in there on page forty. Um, we talked about the M and O levy. That's not really what we call it anymore. And it's called the, it goes under a couple of names. One, EPNO, Education Project in Operation Levy or Enrichment Levy, so it should probably use the, use the current terminology for that. Okay, and then um, I think there's I'm looking at this budget uh section, and we need to be a little clearer. The the foundational section that you're talking about there is referring to the um to the general fund. So we need to kind of make that clear because we have like four budgets that were the school district to deal with, the, which the big one is the general fund, and also the ASB, and also the capital projects, and also the debt service. And so um, we just need to make sure that that this one's clear that we're talking about um the general fund. And I think as far as, so a future, this is fine, make a couple of changes and we can uh approve it. I think the first test that we were gonna have are these two new board members. So uh, we should probably have a um kind of a
Review.
A review by then to see how it's going, because I'll be the thing. Is that the whole purpose of this?
Yeah. For sure. Um, yeah, I think it's a good point. Maybe we can add, um, you know, in I don't know, it's reasonable, March or April-ish, even just kind of like a check-in, um with uh Dr. Droza and the new board members, just to kind of say, hey, how's this a supportive tool or not, what might be um the more helpful uh for future generations of the handbook?
Dave and I have a planned orientation with the handbook as a centerpiece. So that's one of our goals.
So I'm a little confused by Dave's comments. Um, did you want to suggest change language regarding the way the budget's described? Did you actually have substitute language, or are you saying it needs more work and we'll do it later?
I'm just saying, this this section on page forty-one is titled foundational. It should, it should say general fund.
Okay.
Because that's, that's what we're talking about here.
Okay. So easy fix.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then say with the the levy, the M and O, that's something that could be changed.
Got it. I agree. Um.
And Deb's got that.
So those are updates. I'm trying to then figure out, are we getting very close to passing this and then we can review with the new
Members in the future? I think we're gonna pass this evening with, or or put it up for action with those two small amendments.
I I I guess I misheard when you started talking about the new board members, and I'm thinking, don't they need to?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're thinking that's a, that's a review process to see how, how it um actually functions.
Yeah, they can make it their own or whatever later, but uh, yeah. It's awesome to have this tool in place when they take on a position. I would have loved it.
I mean, this is like, other things should be a levy document, and so if we do it, it's some problems, and we can adjust it, but for now, we can definitely prove this.
We are in concert. Okay, good.
Anything else on this? All right, so let's move to our questions, only portion of the agenda. So we have several items here. Um, and just as a reminder, these are presentations that the board has had the opportunity to ask questions on prior to the meeting. Um, those questions were answered um in writing. Um, so this is just opportunity for us to ask any additional questions. Um, we're getting a initial clarity that's needed. So starting with the um Joseph Foster Memorial Park projects. It's a land-related stuff we see, think.
They sold the land earlier than this meeting.
Yeah, this, this will probably be a further discussion, but what they're talking about is locking this property up for an extended period of time. Um, I just want to make sure, and, you know, we should have, we'll have our attorney's check with this out and make sure it's legal, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. I, I, I think it's a similar situation where the city wants to invest and put in some amenities, and if they're gonna, you know, start sinking some uh you know, some costs into this thing, and then we just turn around and sell it. And that would be a concern for them.
So we need to have the analysis of, you know, from a school district perspective, if, if we wanted to use it at some point, putting these, these permanent structures in there, is that gonna, does that have any effect on?
Completely understand that. Um, and and the length of these concerns me a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and then I think shortly after you guys navigate this stuff, there's a, we're sorely lacking a strategic plan with our properties. We're sorely lacking a, a real, well, I think of these computers every five years, we replace them. We have a plan. Um, there's a wonderful maintenance team that worries about such things, but doesn't have all the money in the world to do it with. And we don't, I don't think we as a board understand what we sacrifice because we don't have the money or what we get done priority-wise because of the time of the year or when the opportunity to make the changes are. But I always feel like we're looking at a locker room, and we're looking at a piece of land, and we're looking, you know, at uh changes without seeing the whole seascape. And I'm gonna ask what the seascape is of this district. We have a lot X or N factors, and some of those like, put in the number N times one equals, you know, whatever. And so for me, um I'm, I look at a lot of this and go, I don't feel like the board has a ten-year, a fifty-year horizon plan for where their head is, and they have a lot of indicators on how many students they have, growth patterns, what's going on in the region. I think we sorely lack in that particular area. Uh, not for the, and it's not because we're lazy, it's because we were busy bailing out the the boat and keeping it afloat. And now I think we're kind of starting to do that pretty well. Um, I I have concerns that we're just kind of looking at these have a very close-up view and not going like, what is it that T S D really wants to do?
I think we have a, a, a shorter term, five or ten-year view, which we're gonna put together for the next bond, but yeah, there's no, there's no fifty-year for sure.
Yeah. And I know that sounds to some people wild, but it's really not. When you're saying you understand the purpose of what you're trying to do and serve the community, when we look at the growth of this community and what's happening to it, when we look at the city plans and what they want to do with T and B, they could add people, but they're also gonna add businesses. And we don't know what that means to us. And I think, you know, I won't be here for it, but I just think we ought to sometimes look at the horizon and go, you know, we're, we have a compass setting, but like, what is it we desire? For the school district and more importantly, the community here.
I am trying to sit with, um, I mean, I think, I know that there has been some so several months ago, uh, it was asked, right, that the um, that the operation scheme came with kind of uh their capital projects plan. Um, that was brought to us, and so we have seen that. Um, I know that there's some conversation that we need to have around, again, what are we prioritizing? Because I think that's the thing too, is like those plans are gonna inevitably probably change based on just circumstances that happen, right? Something breaks down, you have to prioritize that in a different way. Um uh, so all this, I guess, I, maybe I wonder, like, where, where and how much do we want to spend? Do we need to really spend our energy? Because I mean, I think you're right, right? A lot, we're, we're being asked to look at a lot of things related to our property right now.
Yeah.
And so um, and and to, you know, reiterate the point I made about the previous discussion, what is it a little like fifty years from now if we need that land, right? Um, so I totally hear your point. Um, how do we do that in a way that doesn't feel um one-two burdenism um for the team? Um, and then yeah, I don't know, I guess what would we need then to really be able to have a a thoughtful, long-term discussion about our land?
My phone is back inside of there. Okay, thank you for sharing. Uh, Director Hoover, I don't think you have feel like you gotta defend that. We are prioritizing navigating this wonderful district through some crises. And the crises we've been navigating requires our full and undivided attention. It doesn't mean that everything else isn't important. But if we don't get this up, none of that will be accessible to us. And everybody here knows that. Uh, so, you know, I have to apologize for that. Uh, we've got a handful, and other districts are going through what we went through. And trust me and believe, even if they have the strategic fifty-year plan, it will have dust on it when they get done with these violent conditions. So we're gonna, we've established what our priorities were. We've been doing the difficult work, the hard decisions were made, um, and we're gonna get to it. It's as simple as a subcommittee holds the properties to begin to strategize for ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty years. And anyone who's ever done a long-term strategic plan knows that that and ninety-nine cents will get you uh, uh, twenty-five percent of a fourth of four. But it does help facilities and planning to know where we're trying to go. But at nine-one-one, the ambulance does not worry about the speed bumps in the road. We gotta get from here to there in an emergency. And we have done a yeoman's job under your leadership as president, under our superintendent crew. You know what? You're, you're a freaking rock star. I taking that job and got me to solve this, man, I could work at Enterprise.
I'll ask them for a job.
My point is as accurate as your assessment is, and it is, but it's also doing the exact same thing. It's taking this component that's been neglected and saying, hey, why haven't we done that? Well, there's an answer. Uh, but I don't, I don't think that has anything to do with neglect, doesn't have anything to do with shortsightedness, doesn't have anything to do with any blind spots in an executive function. We came here. I know when I started this folder, we were already in nine-one-one. And so, just to get it on the record, we're doing just fine. We're gonna get to it. We're gonna get to it. Shoot, we were headed to nine-one-one and all the pipes blew, blew up and cast egg. What are we supposed to do? Not fix the pipe so we can figure out uh, the wetlands down at the park? Nah, you gotta deal with that. Uh, we had a new CFO. Well, man, we've been in such transition, we haven't got the strategic plan here in a long time. So just for folks listening and chiming in in the community, put it in context. We've been doing some heavy lifting.
Yeah. I I I will chime in and say that this comment was not about leadership. It was about the whole board. Yeah, and when the patient gets a heart review and they've got him under control, and they get him healthy uh enough to sit up and think about going back home and possibly to work, the next thing is changing that diet. Science program is called Long.
Yes, but what the dialogue says, I don't think the board understands.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not interjecting. I'm not interjecting to say that there's a reason we've just to feel ashamed. I say I'm proud where we are right now.
I understand, but you said, I don't think the board understands, and I just want to put that in context. It was, it was for no lack of understanding. It was for strategic, monetized.
I don't want to be singled out and divided here. We.
You were wrong enough.
No, no, I said, we need to start looking at long ways.
Yes.
So we don't look at macro limits.
Board understands A, B, C, and D. Those are your words, not mine.
I know as a member of this board, I know.
I'm gonna invite us to a pause for a second.
All right.
I'm gonna invite us to pause for a second.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and we can choose a value to lean into if we want. Um, transparency, courage, righteousness, curiosity, should be the great ones. Um, and then definitely want to make sure that we're being respectful and centering each other in our conversation.
Wordsworth.
Um. Okay, um, so I hear, um, that uh maybe what you said was taken slightly out of context, okay? Um, and I hear that you were really just, you were really trying to clarify and honor where we are. Um, uh, and just bring uh some grounding, right, um into that, and then recognizing that, um yeah, just where we are is okay. So, um, coming back to our conversation about the park project. Realizing that we don't have, right, the, we, we have not, um, uh, for all the reasons that you named, right? Really been able to 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 vision, to put that group together, or to think about what that looks like. So we, we don't have that front of us, and we won't have the luxury of having that in front of us, which we won't.
Right.
Um, uh, uh, and my assumption is, is that there's also some timeliness desired for this. Yeah, so I'd love to hear a little bit about that. Um, kind of what is your timeline? And I know it's probably here, I saw it, but I could you share with us a little bit about um kind of what you're hoping, what you need from us, so then we can decide what we need to make a really thoughtful decision? Please.
Evening. Uh, thank you for letting us change spirited conversation. Uh, David, this is fiscal analyst for Tepel Parks and Rec, and here are our wonderful deputy director, Chris Kelly. Um, so I do want to clarify one quick thing, and I apologize that kind of the title of the item is, uh, there's Joseph Foster Memorial Project, and there's a Riverton Park Project as well. Uh, there's Joseph Foster Royal Project and there's a Riverton Park project as well. So I want to make sure just to be a quick second there. We're talking about two locations, two projects. Um, so what we have in, in front of you, we have it in the number one presentation here, what you have. We're kind of asking for, for three separate actions or however it is perceived for you guys as the board or a superintendent and so on. Um, we're kind of in the same boat as the pool that we've received some grant dollars, one of which was from King County, um. Different program of King County, the youth amateur sports grant, and that was for, for Foster Park, for a synthetic turtle conversion. And the other one is actually a state grant of five hundred thousand dollars and that's for Riverton Park. So two different grants, two different bodies they come from. And two pretty close requirements and both of them, um, come down to site control and tenure that we as the city as the grantee can guarantee to our grantor. Um, so you'll notice that both the grant, um, leases we currently have those properties, they both expire right now at the end of twenty fifty-one. That was signed in twenty twenty-one, thirty years. Um, so we have slightly close to, so for Joseph Foster Royal Park or the King County grants, they're asking for thirty years of control. Um, so that would mean that we, we believe we could finish construction on that project in twenty twenty-eight. So thirty years from there would be twenty fifty-eight, so twelve thirty-one fifty-eight. On top of that, they have a slightly additional requirement to that, now they have lease control being through them, but a restricted covenant being placed on the property as well, signed by you as the site owner. That basically just binds to that as well. Hey, you're gonna have this publicly accessible for thirty years, so right through twenty fifty-eight as well. So that's kind of the two items there for, uh, Joseph Foster Royal Park. And then for Riverton Park, which is the state grant, their requirement, I can double check, make sure I'm not misquoting this, I'm sure you're legal, double check if they go through as well. Theirs is twenty-five years, um, from the end of construction, uh, sim- similar project timeline, we believe we have that somewhere in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, so twenty-eight plus twenty-five, this is to twenty fifty-three. Um, so all along, we're asking for basically a seven, seven years on Joseph Foster and another two years on Riverton. And then Foster has that actual, um, deal of restricted covenant. And we're in the same position as the pool, we're working in the pre-contracting phase for these contracts right now. Um, so I think. In your packet, I think we were able to give you like an example contract, but not the complete. Um, so we're working with, uh, King County to always get those, those language fully installed in those, so we can eventually show you a full copy if, if you'd like. Uh, we do have the restrictive covenant example in there as well, um, but that's kind of where we're at is, is you're our, you're our partner, you're the owner of these parcels. In some cases, mobile parcels that these projects are going to go through, because those parts are cut up in a couple of different ways. And, uh, we want you to be aware and, and hopefully, um, right beside us to do this work, but also there's some legal matters as well. Our grantors need to be aware of before they send us all this money or, or we, we spend some money and they send us it.
Thank you so much. I think that's so helpful because we, uh, jumped into this idea of longevity, right? We're all really talking about seven years because we already have a lease fifty-one. Um, uh, so that context is really important. Uh, can you only understand the kind of how the covenant and the lease interact with each other?
Um, so I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to get too. My, my understanding is so you guys are the property owner, that would be signed, my understanding from our grant manager, I'm happy to connect to you, her with you as well. She wanted to actually attend that weekend, but she couldn't. Um, so the restricted covenant will be signed completely separate of our grant contract, which also to be clear, we're signing the grant contract. You guys are just having to look at the leases and the covenant. Um, so that would be a restricted covenant placed on the property noted with King County recorder. It's just that extra layer of protection for, for King County is the granture of funds and, and the language is pretty specific of basically saying, uh, something along, along the lines of this property will be made publicly accessible for thirty years. Um, so it's just that extra layer for, for King County is actually the first grant, I don't live in as a covenant, so I'm kind of stepping with you as well. But that's my understanding, but we can happily go back and get you more information.
And I'm sure we'll definitely chat about it when we're able to. Great, thank you.
I guess one of my, my questions, I guess. Is that Paige, you guys have a, a, a grander vision for the memorial park other than just being an asset there then? So I think what is currently the dog, dog park area, I also see a bunch of courts and things in there. That's not what you're doing now.
No, that's, that's the whole master plan, the, the vision that the community came up with for that.
Yeah, so I, I guess. And this is a discussion, I guess, what's school and district needs to have is. To some degree, it's, it sounds like we're permanently locking up these, I mean, at least for thirty years and, and. You know, the more, the more, you know, kind of investments you put in here, then it limits, I think, the, uh. The options of the school district at some point or other, you know, thirty years, forty years down the line, we wanna, we need to put a school there. Um, that's, that's my only concern about, you know, we're starting about layering, you know, uh, capital infrastructure is on top of this. Property, you're, you're basically taking it away from the school district practically. I mean, we know that, I mean, the, the political reality of this is also that. You know, if the school district tried to come in and put a, a school here, I mean, the community in this area guaranteed would be screaming and yelling at us. And so, um, that's just, I think, you know, we're talking about our long-term, uh, vision of the school district, I think that's, we just need to kind of. Weigh that a little bit because otherwise, you know, if we have to, if we don't, if we couldn't use these properties, then we have to. Buy the school district, it's gonna be, I mean, I'm gonna be long gone with that, but the school district is gonna have to, you know. Pay more money to find some other property and we know in this, uh, property is just going like that. So that's just my.
Yeah, you're, you're right. It's a balance of leaving the land as this kind of outdated park system and the need to that community. Until you're ready to build a school on it, or do we make it a nice community park until that time comes? And, and a lock is locked on our end though as well. It's not, it's that you, you, we would have to find comparable land for the grant wording. We'd have to find comparable land for reuse by taking on that grant, not you guys.
And I think. Wisdom of just having this dialogue is my answer. When you bring the lawyers into that, you can just shape the, the language to. Have that some form of reasonable down the line if the school district needs to put up a school, cause yes. The community would have a fit, but by the time you need a school, the community's already having a fit because you need another school. So, yes, but I think lawyers can navigate that or whoever does the legal documents for the final. You just, as Kate said, you've got to think strategically down the line, but you can put that language in it, in the documents and, and.
And the question is, I mean, this is a large property and I, I could envision, you know, like putting a school on part of it, but not all of it. But it did, but if you start, you know, laying things in here, you may limit the options of where. I mean, I guess a little weird, I mean, a turf field, that could easily be, you know, removed and, you know, so where. We start talking about more permanent structures, maybe not so much, I don't know.
I think that's where we have to then consider then shared use agreement, language.
Yeah.
Where a lot of cities have that specifically. Uh, where actually parks and schools are alongside each other and then you have to have an agreement that during the school day. It is specifically for school district students only. And then, but after that, then it's an open park, which actually I think community likes to, I'm just saying there's possibilities. Um, but you have to make sure that in the plans that we have that here clearly laid out and then where would the, where's the best place to put. Like, for example, maybe the best place isn't to put over the turf or a school, maybe it's somewhere else. It's just those are the things we have to talk about if that is this kind of consideration in the future.
So I got a couple of questions, which are, um, you are adding these seven years. In order to meet a grant?
Yes, part of the, part of the grant agreement, um, specifically for, for those who fosterized this third year covenant, right? So we kind of have to have matching lease control and covenant alongside it to, to meet their stipulations of a.
And the covenant's all this part about making it open and public, et cetera.
So correct.
Yeah, okay, so then, uh, soccer player was renting and what they've been doing in partnerships with churches and with their schoolyard or the day. I personally wish we would open up space with the parks at our elementary schools. And, and because we've got kids up in Caskey New or riding their bikes in the streets right now, because we have six foot fences. That don't allow them to play, you know, and it's most obvious during the summertime. And I just, I just, we, we have moved them off of land that have playgrounds and soccer fields and things like that. Because we're afraid of who will be on the property during the school hours, right? And it doesn't open up. I hope one day that this district sees fit to. Work with the parks district on that, but for this thing, again, um, I would have to set our. Our. Our school district consider this for the, for the community, but at the same time, that our attorneys, and I would say the same thing with the pool. Really scrutinize the off-ramps and really make sure about first rights of refusal, kinds of situations. And, and make sure that we land on the favored side of each one. So if I went with the pool, if they jump around and try to sell to, you know, an eighteen story building. We get first right refusal by the land back. Similarly here, if, you know. I don't, I don't think the asphalt church lasts thirty years. So I think it's a little amusing that we're being asked to have our hands tied for thirty years. So there's gotta be, uh, an off-ramp for us that's a little less constrained, right? But the covenant, I agree with it, because you're gonna have to put some investments in, you should be able to say. You can't do certain things with it, you gotta make sure that there's access for the public. I, I couldn't compare more. Um, it's just, I don't understand totally tying our hands down on this. And I don't think we should try to sell it out, uh, from under you, right? And maybe give you first right refusal. Those are all things I would love in the few weeks that you guys start to look into this. And again, I'm not two, three meetings from out of here, but I will be watching as a community member and, and I think if there was a survey. Or we looked into it a lot, yeah, what Dave said is the covenant's gotta want that green space and place to play.
Uh, to, to clarify or please provide some context to that. We, we have early lease agreements with you guys for all of these properties. There is a first right, right of refusal offered to the city, I forget which section.
Yeah, nothing changes it, right?
Not that I know of by this branch or anything.
Wouldn't you need to know by?
That I can provide, I can provide a bit more clarity on, I know for, um, the state lease of the Riverton Park project, before they came and signed the agreement with us. Um, they do want us to provide a date by which we would extend said lease. Uh, we haven't waited on exact date. It's, it's not immediate, it's not, hey, you know, this moment.
Um, don't say that, don't say that.
But no, there, there is, I, I think we were offering to at least to say, hey, can we have that in place by construction hypothetically, right? So we were thinking that's a fall of next year. Um, so that's at least River Ten.
For, for planning purposes, like second quarter next year, first quarter next, you know, that, that'd be ideal.
Okay.
But also know you guys have a lot of stuff going on.
So if this were a, a beginning of the year. That would be, that would be a fine timeline for you all, for us to bring this conversation back, have our type of session first quarter.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so from the board, um, as we think about like what that conversation might look like. Um, is there anything that's coming to mind right now that you might want to need data points, information, something, um, that could help again? Navigate that discussion or is it just we need to kind of bring these agreements in harmony and have that session? Great. Okay, so if we could get that, um, on, uh, agenda for. January, February, uh, in quarter one of next year, that'd be lovely. I'm saying that to me there, so we'll not be here. Uh, all right, thanks everyone. Uh, so now we move to our technology plan. So what additional questions do you folks have here?
I'm interested in the whole area of. Oh, there he is. Oh, yeah. Um, artificial intelligence, obviously, and, um. How, so you. Um, I'm, I'm kind of curious, Dr. Will, you said we're doing instructional rounds.
Yep.
Uh, soon, um, I'd love to see some.
Thank you, thank you.
Love to see some examples of, just, I don't know what, usually when you did instructional rounds, there's kind of a problem in practice or something. I mean, it's really interesting to me to see how some, some.
Technology.
Uh. Uh, classrooms are using artificial intelligence, uh, because there's a, there's a reference in here to the, to the guidance from the O S P I, which is pretty extensive. And I just, it would be really interesting to me to see in practice what, what people are doing. That's more of a, I think probably more of a teaching and learning question than it is a technology question.
We can find out what we can gather against the area will be.
Cause this is, this is a big, this is a huge area, obviously, that's revolutionizing schools and lots of other things. And so, uh, it's really, it would really be helpful to see some, some examples of what's going on.
We can speak to some of that right now, actually. So Aaron DeGana, he can pronounce H R Labor Relations Tech.
Shami Koh, I T Director.
Good evening. So with the, with the A I, one of the. I guess the frameworks that we're applying is this idea of human, A I, human, that's how it's being broken down right now. And so if you're, one example would be that you could take, uh, one of the, one of the programs that are set up, which is. Our, our scholars and staff have, which is the magic. Yes, the magic program and the, the A I would be, or the human input would be requesting the A I module or the. Portal to do something, right, to either consume, to create or to collaborate on something. And then, uh, A I is going to generate some output and then human is going to engage and. Interact with that and either refine it. Continue collaborating on it, continue. Adding additional input. So that's the, that's the model that we're following. And we, from the tech team are supporting that by making sure that there's equity access. And that, uh, and this is also built into the policy that when, when our students, when our scholars are accessing it, that they're being responsible with it. Uh, that they're following guidelines, that they are also being aware of what the output is and. Learning to check in for bias. And so that's part of the, the teaching and learning piece for, yeah.
So I'm curious, are you, are you seeing any of that kind of stuff going on in any of your questions?
Can you, what are you reading?
So the idea that, that you're engaging with artificial, you know, maybe chatbots or different things. And your, the assignment is like, um, think about it just without going to A I first. Correct me if I'm, if I'm phasing you wrong, and come up with some ideas and then feed that into, um, you know, an A I system, chatbot or whatever. And then analyze what comes out and then produce a final product, whether it's an essay or. I mean, I remember I asked you guys, you're what you guys are using it for. Um, I think you were, you ever done in dragons, but, but that one aside, um, generate some, some, you know, test. Uh, questions that somebody could use or ask for an explanation of some topic in math, maybe that you didn't get in the classroom, something like that.
Um, I can say. In at least my own classes, that there's been. Up until very, very recently, no structured use of A I in any of my classes. With the one sole exception being my, uh, English one oh five class, uh, generating some S A T prompts. Uh, that could be on the S A T, uh, to help the students in my class, uh, prepare for the S A T English portion. Uh, though, other than that, I have not had any official school, uh, related use of A I in any of my classes that has been. In any, any.
So it says I were kind of still a work in progress on that one, which is not too surprising, but. It would be, like I said, would be great to see some example, if anybody is actually, I mean, that's one student practice and the organization of other classes. Then they, something maybe, it would be interesting to see.
So I'd say, can just say, uh, something just from a teaching and learning standpoint, we just started with procedures at the very end of our first year here, that was year one. Um, refining procedures, we're now working on policy. And so our, we have, we haven't invested, I would say, in professional development or anything around that yet. We just haven't, we focused on other areas. Um, so the procedures and the policies are there to ensure that there's guidance, right, for teachers who are interested. So right now it's, uh, the, the focus is how to, making sure we have the tools, approved tools. We're, we're taking an understanding, we're going to the conferences, we're trying to understand how we can implement this. I've learned that it doesn't become more, um, prevalent until we start investing in some coaching or professional development. Um, but we're still in the developing, we're with, going with the goers, the ones who actually are. Um, but we're still in the developing, we're with, going with the goers, the ones who actually are interested in. And invested in it, but we don't have a school district-wide initiative yet around this, but it's something that we're, we're developing policy, which we'll be bringing in front of you. I think next month, the next board meeting, we'll be bringing the policy for review for, for uh the board next month and.
Yeah, that's, that's the angel, um. And spread it from there. That's usually the way I am.
So it doesn't surprise me that it's piecemeal in both our classes, but it is a goal of ours, but it is right now our, um, focuses on other. Initiatives in the district.
Can I add something to it? So because we need a foundation build. And because it's very different if you ask different teacher how they. You know, interact with AI. Some they're, they never touch it. Some they're very, you know, through it or using it. We need to bring that things to a certain level. So students get a similar experience. Not because I have this teacher, I got better than you have that teacher, you never use it. Then we have problems with that. So I think this. Foundation is needed before we can have this um teaching and learning. Instruction guide for the teachers there, move forward with this single phase. That makes sense, right?
I guess our, the other person I'd be interested is from the, from the teachers, cause there's, there's way fewer ways to AI that are just help teachers be more efficient. And so that's the other aspect of this is not just this what students see, but what the, what the teachers are maybe using it for and. Teacher rep is gone, so. Kind of the, the other question I just, uh, kind of, and Shani, you've done a fantastic job over this year, but. I'm gathering that our telecommunication infrastructure is in really good shape at this point. Is that a fair statement? I mean.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Because.
Yeah, so there's not, there's not a lot of lags and delays and so forth. And it took us years to get there, but.
Yeah, and.
Big hurry.
And we are, we never stop trying.
Yeah, of course.
Make it better.
Yeah, right.
Just, you know, one instance is just over a month, two months ago. Um, because with, with our wifi, it was. Through E-Ray and they have a, they come up, they, the vendor, uh, come to our school to do actually this, you know, survey. And there's something that we think we, we should be there, but because they, their survey tell us it's not. So now we have to improve it and figure a way, work with the vendor to improve it. So I think this is never stopped. Not because it's, we don't see people walking around, it's, it stopped and we are still giving a lot of improvement.
Right, yeah, yeah. Um. The other one, and I guess you, you got a study going on with the University of Washington. I'm really interested in the, you know, the city. Or the city bought these um laptops and put it in areas where the network is good and so forth and so on. And. Uh, so I guess we'll, we'll hear at some point how that's, and you know, I've always been curious about it, is how. Is that really impacting student outcomes or not in total? Yeah, there's a good study going on, we'll find out.
Exactly. No, we were really excited. They, so we have this collaboration happening with the city of Tukwala where. We're applying Chromebooks in certain areas and our. There is definitely a shared interest in learning what the positive impact is on student achievement. And Esther Zhang is a researcher at University of Washington and she's connected with Joel Bush. Who is one of the tech leads in the city and they are collaborating on some research to figure. To help understand this because the city was so invested in providing these Chromebooks for scholars. Tukwala was interested in making sure that its owners received them. And so we created the, created the condition so that that could take place. And so we should have some achievement data for scholars that receive these.
I have a few questions. I'm, I'm gonna start real basic. Uh, first of all, your reputation far and wide is so good. Thank you for, in good times and in bad, being so high quality in what you do and, and. Really helping us think critically about what's needed here. Um, I'm not gonna dive into AI, I'm gonna go to the basics. Uh, when I look at my laptop, it's on Windows ten, uh, pro education. Is that the case throughout the district? Are we gonna stay there? I work for the county. We're always behind and we just went to eleven. So we're at least two or three years. And if I did not mistake it. We were told that October fourteenth, we would be unsupported, or we would have to pay more money. For my laptop to support it. So I'm wondering where we are with that decision here.
Okay, so this is not supportive, it doesn't get updated. Yeah, how we have uh Windows dependent last year, that's excellent. That's one and. Um, it's recently checked, we have probably less than fifty laptop or computer on Windows ten, less than fifty.
Okay.
So if you have one, you are one of those fifty.
I'm okay if it's a board member, I'm okay if it's a student, right?
So we're still trying to get those, but. Yeah, somebody, some, someone, some staff is, want to hold on to us, we have to. Communicate a little bit more, but by less of VP, they are still on Windows ten.
Okay, and then the next question is, the Chromebooks kind of happen to you. I think it's a happy marriage. I worked at Boeing, they only did. What they considered IBM descendants, but we worked in creative video units and media units and daily units and. Learning, we created the learning tools, um, um, all kinds of things. And we just simply couldn't work without that, right? And so to have students, uh. For lack of a better word, be ambidextrous in both worlds is a really important thing. Is it only by happenstance that they're using the Chromebooks? Or do we have a strategy in helping them move back and forth between the old IBM models and the Apple tops?
Well, right now we do not have time to move back, but to move to Windows. Because it will be very hard to manage those, very. Little way we can actually control the, the windows. Well, we do have different devices when the teachers. Ask for, uh, so we have laptops, windows, we have. Uh, some modules, we have some services, because his, his garden is outside, sometimes you want to. Bring that out and, and we also have, um, some Mac. And we also have iPad for little kids and for special, we do try to do those. As the request or needs come up. So we don't just. Try to switch the windows or what season.
Gotcha. Last question, I look at the budget on uh page fifteen. And, um, I'm okay with numbers going down. The money project expenditures go down twenty seven, twenty eight. Um, the dollars stay subscriptions, you can't help that. It's just gonna be what it is. I'm amazed you can hold it to like this. I see numbers going down on the staffing costs. Are we doing something to staffing in twenty seven, twenty eight? What's going on there?
Yeah, there were some projections that we could possibly move some of the, the tech money off of or out of salaries. And into maybe other categories, professional development perhaps.
Professional development, I'm amazed you can do what you do with what you have on the budget. So. Uh, okay, I, I, I'm amazed that you can stay within the budget that I see. Um, and I'm very impressed with that and I, I'm just gonna flat ask, we, we don't have a budget tree, but if you. Were to expand this budget, where would you expand it and buy how much?
Well, um, I, in the last couple of years, two, three years, I think, I stopped doing a big refresh. For instance, if we need to have a, a some refresh for the teacher laptop, we do in face. So the, the money will spend a little bit this month, I mean, next month, and then it doesn't come up with like a big budget. And then with that, we can replace those bad program ones first and those that can, that's still functioning. That, you know, some of the old laptop, like a big window ten eighty, that is a different story. But if they're still good, we just. Replace it later on when the times come. So it's, it's trying to. Not spending money in a big chunk and just rather we, we go see, I, I think it actually worked pretty well.
Well, I just, uh, again, want to reiterate, I have been watching you for last year or so. I've heard that before. Um, I'm just really impressed with the work that you do. Thank you for helping our student district do as well as it does. Thanks.
Sorry, I have just a few. I have to go back to the AI stuff. Um, uh, do we have a specific approved AI platform?
We have several.
Okay.
That, that are being used.
Okay.
Contents, probably good group, yeah, used and approved or just used. We're training around them.
And then what are the. For lack of a better term, parental controls that we can put in place for those platforms? I guess it's probably nothing. Besides what's in the system itself for the laptop.
Yeah, so, so the requests come from teacher. Or from school, they want to use this, they want to use that, and then you should go to, well, Darren is the. Contact person for that and he bring that into the curriculum council and they discuss that and approve during the. Uh, that, that meeting we have.
Do you have a, um, a list of what those platforms are? And you can email it to me if that's.
Yeah, it's, there's a micro bit and there's a screen struck and also there are some, what the problem was. Google, they have a way to do, so their AI. At this time, we are not opening up because they are, you have to be eighteen or older pretty much, or our kids can use it. So, um, there's a way to get around it is you need to have a. Uh, from the district, which one is, you send letters to, uh, to parents, say. Okay, my kids can use it. That's too much work to leave that all these students. Another is we can add. As the parent to approve it. And that, you need to be, I think we have that. On the student handbook, that unless you object, you'll agree to let the school district. Act on your behalf to decide which curriculum is, you, your kids can, your, your scholar can use.
Those two programs were approved by the school, by the curriculum council. They were kind of in. Um, and improved by the curriculum council, that was the skill struck.
So I'm curious, besides like the, you know, ever like worry something about kids cheating, though I don't think that's like, that's like the least of my concerns. Right? Um, wh- what has kind of come up or emerged in the curriculum council or for our educators around? Where they see some of the pitfalls, um, or the, the worries or even concerns. I mean, I assume everyone's seen. What's been happening in the news with the few instances of young people who have harmed themselves because AI told them to do it. Um, and you know, the reality is, I'm not naive, right, in thinking that. It is here and it's here to stay, right? As much as I wish that it wasn't, it is. So I think it's gonna take a little. Um, but, you know, it's, it's in everything, right? You Google search, AI, right? You, you're on Instagram or TikTok, whatever the kids are using. AI, right, is, is the algorithm, it's impacting the algorithm. So AI is. Present, it has been for a really long time, but it's taking a different form. One that, um, is, is in some. Lots of instances, you, you're hearing more and more instances, I'm not just young people, but adults as well, who are. Using it in place of real human. Connection, interaction, and, and that just makes me deeply worried. Um, and so, you know, again, I don't wanna be naive and say we shouldn't be using it at all. So I think like any tool, there is value to it. Um, but right now, I, I, I. We have to be partnering that. So like this idea of even just like starting with the people who are like, don't know about it. I think that. It, I wish that we weren't taking that approach. I wish we started with education. I wish we started with, here is safety and literacy for AI, how we teach young people. Not even the how, not how to use it, but how to think about it, right? Um, it, it just makes me deeply concerned. Again, and I, I know I've said this before, you know, there's a. These things, right, and social media have caused one of the biggest. Mental health crises for our young people, our young adults, and even people my age, we are addicted to them. And it was the greatest, most flawed social experiment that we did on our young people. And we're gonna do it again with AI. This thing that is deeply unrestricted, it is not made for you. So the idea that you have to be eighteen to use it, good. And actually, it should be older than that because our brains aren't developed until we're thirty, but that's a whole other thing. But, so I don't want any way to get around that. Because we shouldn't be really leaning into it anyway unless we, until we know more. And, and I realize that again, people are probably say, well, currently we just gotta get on board because this is where we're all going. But we're responsible. We're responsible, we're doing what we can to protect the young people in our care. And so I just, I'm just. Really hesitant about just fully embracing it without a lot of care. And again, it's, it's not just how do we use it. But what are the impacts of using it? How can it really harm us as an individual and us as a society if, if we, if we aren't really careful? Well, it's bigger than the school district, right? It's bigger than, but I think we can, we can do that work. As a district, we don't just have to jump on the bandwagon because everyone else is doing it. You know, last thing I'll say. You know, big tech people, they don't let their kids, you have cell phones, right? So we should learn something from that. If the people who are inventing this technology don't even believe that it's good for their kids, we believe it's good for ours. And this whole idea that, well, young people, we need to prepare them for the future, they're gonna figure it out. I tell you what, my kid does not get screen time. But every once in a while, he'll pick this thing up and he knows exactly how to use it. Kids will figure it out because. It's just, it's just everywhere, right? Technology is everywhere. So we don't need to teach them at kindergarten and fifth grade, even in high school to do it. Because you're gonna be able to do it anyway. Um, anyway, there's my feel. And I just, I, I wanna be responsible with this as much as we can. Makes me nervous.
Time to put in just one other vision that I use to do for the robotics programs. I see you have one for this for initiatives. I have a developed middle school robotics, but at the same time, we kind of let our elementary school kind of wither away and so. Uh, we needed, this is one of those many things that you need at all three levels in order to have an effective program. So. Curious continuation on that.
Just to comment on your AI and then to, to go down this, this thing is. First off, I think we, I think, I remember having this conversation a year ago to the year when the actress came. I don't know why Miss Black came. Is Miss Black still working for the district? She was, she's, I don't know, but anyways, so, um, she gave to my mind, last time she came to my mind again this time, but I think we need somebody that's gonna take the lead on. This part of it. I think, um, I know in my field and in my world, AI is like destroying our business. You know, for it. And it's just electricians and plumbers, that's who wanna be, you're gonna be millionaires. These are, that's gonna be like the jobs of. Yeah, will not be able to do it, you're gonna be millionaires. But anyways, but all that to say is, I think, um. What I know about schools that, um, working on for a long time and hospitals, hospitals will do technology really quick. Something new comes out. They'll get the tech, they might get it going. Schools take a long time to do stuff when something comes out. I think we don't, this is something unique. And I think we need to, um. I think the board needs to find meaning for somebody to come in here and kind of spearhead us. And what this looks like for, um, the future of Tukwala's school district. I don't know, I know that we're always talking about money and different stuff, but I think this is important. And, um, I don't know what that looks like, but I'd like to put something on the table, however that is appropriately to think about. We need to. We need to do more than what we're doing now, for sure.
It's like an AI strategy.
Something, something, and also a teacher, somebody that's gonna go out there and be able to, to, to educate both. You know, uh, our staff and I think that. Yeah, I think so. I think, I think we need some, we need, we need to throw some dollars somewhere that's there. I think that's, that's important. And so.
So we, we do have a teacher on special assignment, you wanna talk about what he's doing?
That would be great.
It's already been, it's been there for a long time, but.
Yeah, Darren Hughes is, uh, he works with the tech team, but he is. Part of the teaching and learning, he's a TOSA teacher on special assignment. He's the technology in- instructional. TOSA supports with integration for tech programs, services and also equipment. And I know that part of his work does involve educating educators so that they could support AI implementation in the classrooms. And so he is leading much of this work, very similar to what you. He is leading much of this work, very similar to what you were just describing, that is what he's working on presently.
So he's he he's doing the educating, the implementing of it, and then also is aware of the harmful parts of it. And then a lot letting the staff know both of those and is there. Set times in which the staff is aware of what's happening and different trends. I mean, without you saying it, yeah, it's been, it's been in the news, right? This is going to be happening. So I I wanna, I guess what I'm hoping for. Is somebody there that's gonna help us navigate through the harms and the good of what's happening there. Um and is this person, is that what we're saying this person does? Like. I would be, so I could email him and he can send me back, yep, here's all the harms, here's all what's good, this is what we've implemented. Is that how streamlined it is here or are we just starting this?
It's a part of his job. I wouldn't say it's the, you know, his one point O F to E. I would say it's it's a fraction of his job, but. He is approaching it from a holistic lens. He is looking at, you know, how can I support educators with?
I don't doubt that, but when I hear a part of a job.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I don't, is it a tenth of his job? Is it, is it, you know, is he give a report once a year? No, I don't doubt that that's there. I'm just saying, I think we're in a unique time. And I I would propose, this is what I'm saying, that we propose that we find some dollars of somebody. That can can more navigate what's happening. I don't wanna be reactive. I'd like to be proactive on something like this, so is my all day.
So I'm just gonna say, I hear you on the funding piece, um the tech department has been short-staffed. I'm just gonna own that. They've been short-staffed this year. Some, we've had a last minute resignation in the fall. And we're in the process of filling that position. Uh so when um we say. Part of his job, it really has been part of his job because he's had to support and fill in other needs as well. Um we, if we're gonna make an investment, then we have to figure out exactly what does that look like? Because I see this anomaly is about, I see AI as one of the tools, we have many tools to support. Our scholars, right? We have translation tools up on and on. And so, and then I think about robotics, right? So how do we make sure, because it's not just about. Using AI, but it's also like, how do you apply it like in real time? I do agree as a, I had strict rules as a parent for cell phones in my house. In fact, my kids still remind me when I pull out my cellphone at dinner, that was one of our rules. Nope, like. You know, cell phones were gone for sleepovers, like all of that stuff. So I was very strict. Uh and it is hard, right, to manage all of that. And as a district, also hard, definitely hard, so managing through that. Um I think. For me, I think I agree about the safety piece for families. I think families also are really struggling with how to control. These things as well. But one of the things that I'm interested, and I'm just gonna put this out there, is that's why we've made sure we applied equity analysis. Because when you look at bias and racial bias and on and on towards all of these things regarding anything digital. Um I think it's our kids that need to be at the design table to make it better, right? I, that's what I think. Um I think our students are the ones that actually have all of the cultural and community and. Uh and connected experience that they can improve it for society, right? So I just, that's what I think, but I just wanted to put that out there as a, as a side, and and I don't disagree with you, right? I think that that is real and we're. It's hard, it's challenging.
Can I, can I know something else real quick? Ben sparking, are we ben sparking against other school districts? Are we ahead, in the middle, or will we be behind? Is somebody always doing really good stuff that these people are concerned about and addressing it? That we could adopt? Have we looked around? I know we all go to conferences and we all know somebody's an expert. But a- any thoughts on that?
Yeah, actually, the the TOSA group that Darren is part of, uh we met last week, they met here. And AI was the topic of conversation for, I mean, uh Scott Whitbeck and I both came into the meeting. And introduced ourselves and sat and listened and observed and they were spending the majority of it on. The impact of AI, where is it going, where has it been? And what what do we need to do now and what will we need to do that we don't even know we need to do?
So were they pointing to model schools who are already ahead of everybody else?
That didn't come up, but I think this was, these were all neighboring districts, all dealing with very similar problems of practice. And I think that they are collaborating, which I think is where we're at with it. Because it is moving very quickly. We are learning about it as we interact with it. And we're also trying to teach people how to.
I just feel curious that. There are some school districts who saw this coming, maybe they're all down in California, I don't know. Maybe they're over here by Microsoft, who are on it and saying, these are critical tools for. Uh students be learning about at these levels and we're implementing it. Um and I'm with you, Simon, there's gotta be standards, right? So it's equitable across the learning. Um horizon or uh seascape, right? And it has to build on itself. And yes, they're coming fast, but there are positive outcomes for use of AI. And then it's kind of like teaching uh young people to be honest and. Uh to work hard and and ethical, et cetera. These are, you can, I can use a shovel and kill somebody. Right? But I know it's for gardening, right? So there's just, there's gotta be standards that we're. Helping them, edifying them, educating them on, and I'm just wondering if there were some people already building frameworks to address that. Maybe I couldn't kill somebody with a shovel, I'm pretty sure.
Can I, I wanna check. I I am very concerned about the use of AI. I mean. You know how you say, you know, can you Google that? I've heard someone say, can you ask ChatGPT that in the same vein as you would say, Google that? And that, and that's very concerning. And I remember, you know, when all this started to go down and in my six. You know, my my uh no, my freshman year, that's when that all was really kicking off and. I have my English teacher, who is no longer with the district, tells students to use it to help write their college applications. Like I, we need serious ethical education about the use of AI. Because, you know, I've I've seen people, I've heard people using AI to cheat. And to be, and to replace their own thinking. And I think it is doing real harm to our students. And their ability to think for themselves. And if I don't, and if. We don't get a good, you know, good. Structure for this, there are a lot of places can go very poorly for all of our uh students to come. If we do not, you know. Teach them, you know, the questioning of the AI, you know, questioning of the ethics of it. And learning about the ethics of it, and learning the impacts of it, you know. There, I think there are so many questions that I have personally about how it would be implemented. And if that implementation, even if, you know, we're behind the curve, is the curve even a good thing? And, you know, just, I, back to, you know. What President President Hoover said is, you know, even if, you know. It's a thing that's happening, do we wanna be a part of this bandwagon of it happening just because it's inevitable? Just because it's. Everyone's doing it, you know, it's the, it's the old adage of, you know, if your, if your friend's drummed off a cliff, would you do it too? I'm very concerned.
Yeah, yeah, and and again, I think about. Fifteen years ago, ten years ago, the idea of taking smartphones or phones out of kids' hands in school would have been laughable. Right? Because we did this big push to get them in everyone's hands. And we should pass a policy this year. That puts cell, takes hands, cell phones out of the hands, right? So again, even the cell phone, the social media epidemic. As an example of what AI could be is terrifying. Um so I mean, I I'm kind of, and again, maybe that maybe that's really needed to be. I wonder if if to your point, and this this may not be exactly what you mean, so you can clarify for me and and say no. Um I I almost wonder, like, I kind of wanna see a. What is our vision and a plan for AI before we start rolling anything else out? Uh what is our plan for educating our kids? Not just educating our teacher on how to use it, but how are we gonna make sure that our students have AI literacy, that our families? Have AI literacy. Again, we also have to address the medical issue, right? If I'm lonely. Feel like I have no friends, I'm isolated, but now there's this machine that will talk to me, know everything about me, validate me. Ah, we're just making more disconnected, more isolated society.
Yeah, I I agree with that one hundred percent. I mean. I just a couple of weeks ago read a, you know, story about a cult that formed around AI and then worshiping this AI model like a god. You know, these lonely, lonely people that have, you know, nothing else really going for them. And they find literal religious significance in this AI model. I'm I'm very concerned not only for, you know, my fellow students, but also the adults that have to interact with this and. It it's it's exactly what you're saying.
If you, in order, if you want to um kind of. See what other school districts are doing, we we may need to loosen up on. I mean, I've been to some some conferences on my own dime on this, and I I can tell you, AI is everywhere at those conferences. So we might need to loosen up a little bit if we wanna find out what's going on. And then I can tell you that the Peninsula School District. Is one of the leaders in the AI itself and um so we may need to um. Send our folks to some conferences so they can get educated on. On what's going on, because it is, is a super fast moving field, super fast, and it's just swapping and so. It's it's gonna be tough to get a handle on that.
I I am curious, though, Dr. Rosen, to your point, and also to our student rep's point, is I'd love to hear from the students. I don't know if we can do a poll or or a pulse check, like you guys say, that we could get something together. A few questions that could be brought out, you know, and and talked about what what that would be used, and then that, I think, would help. Also further the conversation of my understanding. Better of what what uh may or may need to be done and how quickly, because it would be, it would be good. I think it would be good to hear different.
Yeah, and again, I think to the point is that we don't have to remove with any sense of urgency, AI is not going anywhere. So we we don't.
Well, luckily, we've been there, it hasn't been our priority, so it not yet.
It's been enough to be, but I've heard this term again, and a curriculum council has not introduced and has like. Well, Karen said anything, but has already approved two forms of AI that. I have, I have, the board's not seeing, at least I haven't seen.
I think there's a proof of policy about it, so in theory, AI shouldn't be happening in our district.
But here, I've said this, yeah, said this again, so I've yet to see the curriculum council up here. Presenting anything that they're approval, because I'm curious about how these people got approved, to begin. So uh that being said, I'd love to see the curriculum council at some point up here at the board meeting and then tell us what they're, what they're putting forward. That would be great.
Well, I'm interested, maybe we can talk to Scott and Aaron about ensuring that there's a safety component to, what that safety component looks like. A little, I mean, the assurances for families, right?
Wow, you say safety?
I'm just saying, on the agenda.
Why you should.
All right, thank you.
Well done.
Um all right, next is our school safety plans, you know, we need initial questions you folks have.
I don't know, basic, um I I spy. Uh a template pattern, they're all pretty good. Um I'm meticulously indicated in ICS, so command system, um. I see it laced throughout this. Maybe I missed it, I looked at three or four of these. Where is the department to do the handshake with the fire department, police department? Uh an incident command center, built by some emergency management center. That's the only thing, and it says, it's not perfect, um most of these documents, that's one of the pieces of. Does our police and fire know that a cascade view is gonna gather on Thirty Second Street, right across the street? Or up on the upper hill with the sun password, and that there's maybe a problem with fences, right? Similarly, uh I can't remember those two, Chuck Yell. But one of them is really specifying the legality, and it was a little bit talked about notification, but it didn't talk about the location. So there's little pieces there, because um if there's any emergency people responding, able to get up in time. I'm just taking after him this way for a while, the time for two, um. Having them know exactly where everybody's gonna be, I mean, those people know who they're gonna be dealing with and how they're gonna be identified. I think that's critical, so I'm not, I'm talking and not wanting to answer. Your thoughts?
Scott Whitbeck, chief of schools and academics, self-reported answer, he can. Um one thing I think, I've, I've, although I'm on the committee, the COPCAP committee with the police department, uh. Chief Reverend Deputy Chief Lund, both are one of the that always leads those monthly meetings. And we have talked about different school issues, we talked about a notification area, and like you mentioned, one challenge is that. Uh there might be not not too many sites within easy walking distance for each of the schools where. They might, like, for example, show Walter and Foster show up, and I think, well, let's see if we can use foster, well, foster might need to use their own field. So um part of that is working through that. Then once if the board approves the plans, that kind of gives me more information to the next meeting. As I talk with the police department and fire department, what I've asked them to be ready to. Um look at our plans and tell us what's missing, what's missing. And then what should be planned on. I think all the plans do have something stated for reification, like tech out. They used to be, I think, going to the first church, and I think they're going to Reverend Proctor's um church. So um they did revise, what you said, because they realized that space wouldn't hold five hundred and seven kids. Um so so this, that is definitely, there's a lot of documents where we did use the template. Um Dr. Rosen's, they'll procure a sample that had been reviewed by a risk management uh for another district group connected with. And so that was something I could um share with all the principals and said, use this to make sure you cover all these areas at least. Add what's pertinent to your school that you can see is not there, but at least cover these areas. So that's why they look very different because they are.
Yeah, it's, I thought it was really a good approach, um and phone systems, there seems to be a phone chain. But I I've been through snowstorms where everybody called and they jammed up all the cell phone networks and nobody could call me about this locally, so. I didn't, maybe you've witnessed it, do we have out of state contacts, just like they've always taught us to? In the old days, they used to worry about earthquake. And all the phones would fall off and they'd get phones on the streets and it would clog all the lines and you wouldn't be able to get. And all resources come from outside the state of Washington, so they've always asked you to have a family or a friend. Somebody in other states to be able to call because your talk will go throughout outstate. Or they could call you in state, believe it or not, the way this system does that happens. So I wondered about that, and when I looked at the phone things, you have, has our school worked out some partnership with another school in another state? Where we could, you know, make appeals for resources and things through them.
We haven't got a lot of idea, so thank you. Um we do have uh radios that Director Cardenas has organized for all sites. She and her department have gone to every site, personally test them all to make sure the channel is work, so we all have those. That's not why they publish, they want other people, you know, it's a virtue just for internal use. Um but so uh we do, we practice, use it to make sure people don't forget, that's not something they might use every, you know. On a regular basis. So that at least will help if those are still working, if cell phones or landlines are working, this would be another option. We haven't thought about going outside the state, and that's a great, we have the great buzz now.
It's a pretty common. As well.
So just a a little fix, the typical entry, um page eight, this is the outside of the operations in the King County Library. And then there's probably, so this is the third side of the, so. Need to fix one, yeah. Um the other, the other, the big question is, the most common thing I think we have is um lockdowns and modified lockdowns. And these happen a lot of times. And are you pretty confident that uh everybody knows what to do in those situations? I know a couple of years ago, there was some confusion in some of the rooms about how you actually lock the doors. If you do a full lockdown, that means everybody's locked down in their classroom as opposed to the perimeter of the school, so. I mean, I assume, hopefully, unfortunately, as I say, we've done it enough. That hopefully, everybody's comfortable with doing both of those.
Yes, I said, we have talked with the principal meetings about that, and just based on this question we received on Monday morning. I had the created a form with just the ball points, which I include here. And sent out to all the principals and directors in different buildings. So just to clarify the difference of. Um you've, like you said, the full lockdown, which means um a certain major threat. And that's where you lock everything on outside, close blinds, lock doors, get away from the windows and stay quiet. And that's where you lock everything on outside, close blinds, lock doors, get away from the windows and stay quiet until they're told to flee. And don't open the door for anyone until you get the certain signal. Um, modified lockdown, also just called lockout, just means if there's a potential threat coming, or even like um other something other than like an intruder, that would just be securing the exterior doors. But you don't have to worry about getting away from the windows or closing blinds or locking in here. It's strictly the outside. And there's shelter in place, which is a model, and that's typically for if there's um like a you know, contemptuous air stream coming expected to come past your school. Then you that's more, um, as a principal, I remember having to watch out for that. So that might be more of that um temporarily shutting down the exhaust system so it's not bringing in the outside air and shelter being cleared. Uh but that means shelter place, stay inside. I'll be opening this in the locker. It's not, there's no um bear no valid threat of somebody or some danger actually getting in the door. Yeah, exactly.
So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. I mean, I would suggest doing a practice like the the that I think we've done so often. That I just, you just need an after action report. Okay, is everybody comfortable doing all these things? And if yes, boom, then.
Right. And um we have talked about, as the last principal media also talked about, um, some folks talked about how they have done this in the past, and I want to see, I think all of us schools would be good to do this, is practice. Um, not only what will you do if you try to go through a normal um evacuation, that is blocked because of rubble, so the world's wired out of options. Um, I also practice what is dreaded, which I hope I'll have a whole election never has happened, what if there's like a shooter coming in and trying to get into school. So we practice for, you know, the worst, and have also not, try not to terrify a little children, but also um making sure we're already, we're not um be overly safe. So we're talking about how to organize something like that in the spring, it might be just quiet on the same day. So you're right, we do it, we're required to do. Um, they have to have every one drill per month, they're supposed to do a couple of breaks in fire every other. And they track the trackers I've given them, and we try to make sure that they're um actually history of the drills.
So adults watch videos in workplaces and they talk about run high and fight. Are children get any kind of education? That they those are the three things, if you can run, get out of there, if you can, if you can't, you have to hide. And if you, if if that's you're you're, you know, confronted and you fight, what what do we tell children?
Sure. Um, and we um inform the principals, and the expectation is they um train the teachers and staff needs, they'll talk about the proper messaging, adult development, the future ages they work with, every children who are even more vulnerable, and then especially for different languages. And then the teachers are expected to be teaching their classrooms within beginning of the year. So they're, you know, ready in case dreaded something happens early on. We don't want to say we waited a month to prepare people, so. Forget it. Or we don't want to do like, welcome to school, now we're in practice of fire. So it's not gonna be a second they get there, but it's soon. I think first miracle has to be within the first ten days of school. Leaving.
I'd probably say that those steps are slightly different for children, right? Working the teachers with, you know, the idea of finding that a kindergarten is not going to be able to do that. Just putting them in more danger.
Yeah, I mean, I work at courts and then uh law enforcement areas and now uh 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 emergency operations and that, those are all targets. So that's why we do that heavy training.
Right.
Schools are also targets. And you don't want to scare them. And no, they're not gonna fight, but they might understand what the teacher's trying to do to formulate a defense, right?
Right. It's definitely is uh part of the future relationship with the children is to message the way that they, the teacher feels certain the children understand it. But um raise a sense of urgency without actual fear. Yeah, it's a gentle balance. Yes.
Yeah.
The only thing I don't see on your lockdown definitions in October, you said twenty twenty five, law enforcement. I'm just wondering, where's the SRO components? Is this the police full of the soon control? Are they the officers? Is the SR taking control of that? If I could get some clarity.
Okay.
Just written down here of what the what that looks like, what that means, associated by SROs.
Right. SROs will be part of their chain of command. Hopefully, it's appears on each of their plans of where that they fit in. And we have two who are primarily, you know, um stationed at the secondaries, and they do um I can deploy it sometimes to demonstrate that there's a severe situation happening. So they're part of the chain of command of the secondaries. And so that'd be part of um we plan for their involvement at the school, but we know when it's a severe situation, the police department takes control, and it's in our document here. Yeah, so at that time, the police tell us, by our principle, say, I'm not taking this, SRO character over here, then that's what they do. The police, then they control the situation from that.
So the SRO is not taking control of the situation since they're already in the zone.
They're they're part of the school's own chain of command. They probably, if you look at the plans, they probably have assigned tasks, like some might be in charge of reification, some that might be in charge of evacuating, uh say, the second floor, there's somebody who has a mobility issue. We gotta get them down safely from the second floor. So those are the kind of things they're working with administrators too, and they're like the site leadership you've been planned for.
Okay, thank you. And they're fully trained in ICS system.
Yes.
Instead of the command system.
They're trained.
They don't have a shift if it gets bigger and the police uh set up commands then.
And the role of them is, we have our chain of command is based on our MOU is the SROs actually work in coordination with the principal, but they are responding to their chief. Their chief is their boss. So that is typically, they would take direction. So if they notify the police department, they could be notifying help and support, notifying, giving initial directions. Um, and then when police dispatched, they are then in charge of any serious situation. But um they take direction from their chief of grace. I just want to clarify that.
Any additional questions?
I'll just, I'll just add one thing, you know, about that that fear element. I, you know, thank God, you know, this year, I don't entirely remember last year, but I know my sophomore and freshman year, there was a good number of lockdowns that happened at Foster and a lot of my friends are still, even now, you know, shook up from all the, from how often they were occurring those years. I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, name names, but I know some of my friends that every time there's an unexpected, you know, announcement, they flinch. You know, I I it's always in the back of my head, you know, whenever, you know, it's some random time will be, you know, I'm so it's there, you know, I'm always thinking, oh, is it, is it gonna be a lockdown this time? You know, even it's nearly path lobbying, the response with all of my friends, and it's, you know, a trauma response. So I don't know how they handle teaching that in the elevens, but I, you know, it's that fear is very, 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 very real.
And I think the the, you know, you're just to broaden that, not to minimize, just to like broaden this, I mean, that that that's just a reality, I think, in so many places now, right? It can happen at the grocery store, right? And so I think it's just this is a really large societal safety issue.
Yes.
Right? Our 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 lack of gun control in this country is just insane. Um, and so you know, the your rest to put all these things in place and to um make sure we can do what we care to ensure that if and when something were to happen, that we um we would keep everyone as physically safe as possible.
Principals, we do the principals, they'll train the teachers, the staff, that we have a structure, so we have some of the fallbacks when emergency happens, people are naturally gonna have an emotional side. We'll have something solid objective to come back to. They do need to use their good common sense. Uh if something comes up that doesn't follow the plan, that they clearly see there's a safer way to do it, then they need to use that good sense to do that. One thing I just wanted to add that didn't happen in my report was I if may have informed the board about this previously, we have um um also work to increase um police access to our school in case of severe emergency. So before they had said, and I found this out through COPCAP to the committee, that they would have to um like all the doors automatically locked for security reason, they don't have to use the Knox, Knox block where you like a wheelchair, they get to use a key to get into and open that door, that's the door to get in. Well, our school's too big, and what if you need to get in the side door? So we now have with Director Cardenas and MLO, and work with um Chief Driver, we have um issued twenty five ID cards for schools not identified, it looks like that's looking school card. But um and they have a um court master who is in charge of making sure they keep the cards safe, issue it to certain officers, and you track who gets what. And it presents them in any exterior door where it is locked, um in any of the buildings in the district. So that makes it much easier case they are called for a severe emergency, they don't wait for someone to come let them in. If you can, if you're in lock-in, you can't come let them in. So that is, it doesn't solve everything, but it's one more step for increasing safety. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next is the policy number four thousand, which is public information program. The review. Any additional questions?
Are the only changes that were made than what we see in the market here?
I assume so.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Hello, my name is Dana. I'm sorry. I was waiting on additional questions. She has Naomi Bird, she her pronouns, director of communications equity.
Might be everyone. Just the markups, track changes, that's it.
Correct.
Anything else?
Anyone?
All right, thank you. All right, this is the risk manager program. Uh, this is a review for our policy, six five zero zero. Additional questions or comments you folks have?
So you finally, I'm commenting on this, and this is just to note that we're paying, you know, close to a million dollars in premiums. And we gotta pay out that share of what twenty five thousand dollars. Um, based on the question of, you know, should the risk school, I'm not sure if my school does this, review premiums every year. Because we're getting, you know, a big short end of this. I know in a few years where we've had, you know, significantly higher payouts, but you know, that's just, I mean, we've never seen a premium anywhere close to that, a million dollars.
Yeah, I undergone HR relations, he can't come out. So yes, definitely, we saw that increase. I, we know that the insurance market has caused, is part of this reason, you know, for the increase, but also there's some some state things happening with some, you know, sex, they call it sexual harassment, that uh those claims now historically can be paid out. They can reach really far back in time, and so there's liability there. And we're hearing that that is cause for why insurance premiums have risen for school districts.
It just is what it is, and I'd say we're lucky that we haven't had real high uh payouts. That's what insurance is about.
Yeah.
Maybe a day.
I'm gonna state just in case, though. Um, that brings us to our action items. Um, the first one being approval of human resources staff report. There's a motion. Any questions or comments? Um, all right, all in favor of approval? All right, aye. Um, uh, next is the approval of the levy action, which is essentially that we are not moving forward with any levy process. Are you in motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Um, next is the approval of the Seattle Times Office. Yeah, that uh Director Larson drafted. So moved.
Second.
Um, and just to clarify, you still want us to approve it, but you'll just wait to to send it out for a several weeks.
Right. And the other thing, um, I will, what I will do is I will submit, you know, and this is kind of a question. My name, and then on behalf of the local school district board, and I don't know, Dr. Pedrosen, do you want me to say Tuckell School District as well, or?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll list everybody's name. If if anybody doesn't want your name, just let me know, and I won't put it. Uh, the other caveat is when a student sees out times, they reserve the right to do what they will. So they may or may not publish all the, anyway, just to let you know what happened, but.
If if they make any changes to it, do they let you know first?
Mostly what they do is editorial checks, yeah, which is what they love to do.
Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let our thoughts to know if you do what we're treating, but I assume kind of a. Um, all right, next is approval of the resolution nine six six, which is approving newly elected board directors to attend the Wasta AML conference.
So. Same here.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is approval of resolution nine six seven, authorizing impress checking and petty cash fund amounts.
So moved.
So any questions or comments, please?
So just good job for our CFO for finding it.
Yeah, since nineteen ninety.
No, going back in time. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is approval of policies number two zero two zero and three one four one. I get an emotion?
So moved.
Second, like second, second, uh all all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is approval of the board director's handbook.
So moved.
Um, do we uh do we need to amend them?
As amended.
Okay, so a a motion to approve the board of directors handbook as amended in our discussion.
Okay.
As amended, so moved.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Ms. Corr, thank you so much. You're amazing for all of the hard work that you've put into this.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. All right, next is uh approval of out of state travel request for soon reader, national to the National School of Counseling Leadership Conference in Yodo.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is the pool of out of state travel request for Andre Mon for the National School Counseling Leadership Conference.
I'm moved.
Turned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is approval of the out of state travel request for Latoya Parker to the National School of Counseling Leadership Conference.
So moved. Turned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'm gonna probably say it strong. Next is approval of the out of state travel request for the Tarkanian basketball tournament.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, discussion, the board has to supervise.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I volunteer.
Free.
Okay.
You'd have to consult the uh.
Um, okay, so I don't think there was actually a motion on the table yet. Second motion?
So moved. Turned.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. Okay, so that was just for our final opportunity for public comment. Um, if you're here, you'd like to offer any public comment you do so by signing up on the sheet at the front. If you're joining us virtually, you can raise that virtual hand or put your name in the chat. I'll give you just a few moments to find that.
And while we're reading, can I just ask one question about the earlier comment period?
Sure.
I think uh some people are used to how we have the comments. We had a young man come in, gave a comment off of a letter he wrote to us. Is there something we can say in terms of how we respond?
So it's actually responded to. Uh, Dr. Pedrosen said a a nice, nice detailed email uh in response to the the public.
I just want to get that on the record.
Yes, and and with an opportunity to meet with me in person as well.
Super candid.
The student, yeah, the student, yeah.
And he seemed comfortable. I just want to make sure.
Thanks for asking, yeah. All right, uh so seeing none, um. Sorry, just, okay, um, if I get a motion to a general. So moved.
Turned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sure, thanks, everyone. Thank you.